Yeah, breezy. We're going to get started. Very good on the stand, Commissioner Demp and the Lincoln Mayor, Father Mike Lynch. Father in heaven, we've come again now. Thank you for life, heaven, strength. We've come blessing your name, so your name worthy to be blessed. Father, we come as a servant. We come right now, Father, to try to do the will of the people. Thank you for what you have done for us so far. Father, Father, we pray for this country right now. We pray for this county, this city. And I ever want to know something about we go. We thank you for what you're going to do. We thank you for what you've done thus far. And we bless your holy name again now. These blessings and all other blessings we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Let the nation see your light, in the highest space of America. To see without a problem, which we stand as one nation under God, in the global delivery, they just for us.
My quick question, everyone, to our meeting this Monday, it was set for 2025 6 p.m. We have a conference line set up. Number there is 1-917-900-1022. Access code 32347. Now, this is not a talk free number, and you may be subject to long distance charges according to your long distance plan. When the chairperson opens the meeting for public comment, please follow the below instructions. If you wish to speak, please dial star five. The moderator will unmute your line and should return to speak and notify you by announcing the last four digits of your telephone number. Please announce your name and address. You will be allowed to speak for three minutes. Any person wishing to address the board regarding an agenda item, be given three minutes for comment. A commenter may only speak one time for each agenda item. And before we move on to the approval of the agenda, there was just shifting some items around under general business for the board. Shifting item 20, the jail operations, to start off our general business. Then we'll go to item 17, the long trail road. And then item 16 with the happenstance for a park robbery. So it'll be 20, 17, 16, then 18 and 19. Everyone okay there?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Move on to our consent items. Does everyone have a chance to go over the consent items? Have any questions, discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Mr. Bishop?
I sent, um, if I want a, a letter on number nine.
Yes, we'll, we'll make those, those additions.
Okay, I'm satisfied then.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second to approve our consent about a paper. set for this date at 6:05 p.m. or as soon thereafter as possible.
Okay, so we have one, well, received one bid. MDM Services Inc. out of Florida.
Our bids and public hearing. Got a couple of minutes, we need to wait.
I'm sorry, what number are we on?
Going on to, uh, under our bids, public hearing, item 14.
Wow, we just went through all those items that fast? Okay, I'm catching up now, thank you.
These bids and public hearings, which, uh, 6:05 start time, so we do got a couple of minutes, we'll have to wait on that one.
Mr. Chairperson, I can't announce the bid committee for item number 14.
Go ahead.
It will be Melody Cox, John Collins with AVCON, Ward Ketchering, and myself.
Good.
How does that compare with what we can approve this thing? It's under the, it's under the, um, the total amount that we have available.
Total cost of 929,500, double O two.
That's the estimated total cost.
All right. So this is a public hearing.
Yes, sir.
All right, anything else? Any discussion on the side? Would anyone get your, uh, big committee members? Go ahead. We'll move on to item 15. We've got, we've got us at 6:10 on that one, so we've got a couple of minutes, we need to wait. Bishop? All right, we're going on item 15. The board, all their public hearings set for this date at 6:10 p.m. or as soon thereafter as possible, to consider the adoption of ordinance pursuant to application CPA 25 dash zero one, Molly Holdings KB Ruins LLC.
Mr. Chairperson, there is someone from that agency who would like to make a presentation to the board.
Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Laura Mills Betcher, and I am a certified land use planner, and I've been hired by the applicant to help them through this process with the future land use map amendment. And if we can go to the next slide, please. This is a series of three parcels that are addressed as Keaton Beach on Beach Road. Um, it's actually, I would say to the north and east, I'm sorry, north and west of what you might call Keaton Beach proper. It is, um, a total of three acres, and it's on Beach Drive and C Meadows Drive at that intersection. And we are requesting a future land use map amendment from the agricultural rural residential category to the mixed use rural residential category. And if we can go to the next slide, please. Uh, this slide will show you, uh, the site again in the red outline, and some other commercial uses within the area, including the Marathon Convenience Store, the Sea Station, that's just less than a half a mile to the north. There is an RV, um, park just directly across the street. And then if we go around the curb down towards Keaton Beach, we have the Bird Rack Sports Bar and Grill, which is another commercial use, another non-residential use, that's just within a half mile away. If we can go to the next slide, please. So when I, when I look at these future land use map amendments, I also look at your comprehensive plan to make sure we don't worry about consistency factors with your plan. Um, one of those is this policy here, policy I dot 10 dot 2, which talks about your environmental protection measures. Uh, we did take a look at the national wetlands inventory. We looked at the FEMA flood zones, and we looked at your coastal high hazard area boundaries, and found that this site is not within any of those categories, so there are no wetlands in sight. We're outside of the coastal high hazard area, and there are no flood zone, no special flood zone areas on the site. So this development that will occur eventually as a result of this map amendment will not impact any environmentally sensitive plan. If you go to the next slide, please. So the category, as I mentioned, we are asking for is the mixed use rural residential category from the agricultural rural residential category. And this is the, uh, the intent, the purpose within your comprehensive plan for that category, which includes those areas that are undergoing a transition from primarily agriculture to a mixture of uses, which we saw previously on the slide that showed the sea store and the RV park and the restaurant bar. Um, while the remaining area can be, stay a mix of commercial and agriculture and residential. If you go to the next slide, please. And then another consistency factor we looked at was to, um, that you want to maintain the rural character of rural areas by limiting development activities to those areas. Um, and that we are looking at the, they, we're looking at the designation of the non-residential use to support some of the services and the goods that are needed by the residents within those areas. I would like to add that, if we could go to the next slide, that your current agricultural rural residential designation does allow for the commercial uses, um, but it limits those to 5,000 square feet, and we're looking for the amendment so we can build up to 10,000 square feet. Uh, no land use conflicts will be created. Uh, there are no, there are several vacant properties adjacent to the site. Uh, and we are following the directive of your comprehensive plan to create a mixture of uses in the area. We did come before your local planning agency last month on March 11th, and they recommended by unanimous votes to approve this request to you. And with that, if you have any questions, I will be happy to address them.
Any questions for the board?
I mean, where, if you say.
We're going to be under 10,000 square feet in the development of the store, yes. About 9,100.
You're not using the whole park.
That's correct. Yeah. And we will combine those parcels. We've been informed that we need to combine them into one. Um, we're just waiting for the approvals in order to be able to do that.
Is it going to be a strike or market bid?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairperson, I'd also like to point out that they have not submitted their development application. That would be the next step. Once, if this land use amendment is approved, then the next step is the, uh, development application.
Yeah, we're teeing that up. Um, we've got most of that ready to submit. We're just waiting for the approval.
Mr. Chair. Go ahead. Bishop wrote this?
Oh, yes.
And I see, did you go by one of our management district, I mean, uh, Nelson Paul Reason Planning Council?
Yes, we were working with them through Bobby on this application, and she was helping us through some of the analysis and the advertising requirement.
Mr. Chair, would, um, make a motion that we read this ordinance by title only?
Right. Second. Motion in a second to read this ordinance by title only. All in favor?
In ordinance of Taylor County, Florida, amending the future land use plan map of the Taylor County Conflicts Plan as amended relating to an amendment of 50 or less acres of land pursuant to an application CPA 25 dash zero one by the property owner of said acreage under the amendment processes, procedure, excuse me, established in section 163.3161 through 163.3248 Florida statute as amended, provided for changing the land use classification from agricultural rural residential less than or equal to one dwelling unit per five acres to mixed use rural residential less than or equal to one dwelling unit per two acres of certain lands within the unincorporated area of Taylor County, Florida, providing servability, provide repealing all ordinances in conflict and providing an effective date.
Thank you, sir. So this is a public hearing, so we will open it up to the public house for comment. Anyone for the public to comment on this hour?
I have a question, sir.
If you say your name, please, sorry.
Oh, my name is Conell Beasley. Sorry, let me stand up here. Um, that all went by pretty fast, so this lady is representing what entity?
That's the, uh, Molly Holdings KB Ruins, uh, LLC, am I correct?
Yes, the property owner.
Is that a, is that a construction firm?
That's the property owner.
That's the property owner. Why is the property owner's name listed as LLC? That's just how they walk.
Not uncommon.
And what, what sort of, uh, what sort of business is going to be run there, or it's going to be commercial application?
It'll be a small box retail store.
I missed the, you mentioned Beach Road. Is that like, uh, like near Adams Beach area? Or where exactly?
At the corner of C Meadows and Beach, Beach Drive.
I did name screw.
What is, uh, if you don't mind me asking, what's the, what's the name of the business? Or is it like a private individual business, or is it a, uh, like a chain or franchise?
A chain.
A chain, okay. So what would the store be specifically? What chain of stores is coming?
So we're a little premature in this discussion because right now we're just asking for the change of the future land use map, but, um, it will be a retail store, the general.
Okay, so what I'm getting at is this indeed going to become another Dollar General?
It will be a Dollar General.
Well, then how come you guys just aren't transparent about that from the beginning?
Well, I can be, but that's not supposed to be a factor of their decision today.
Okay, well, but here's the thing about Dollar General. There's already five Dollar Generals within, I don't know, six minutes' drive from here. Okay?
This is in Keaton Beach.
Wait a minute, ma'am. Okay, I understand, Keaton Beach.
I'm here to present the board.
Yes.
Well, because Keaton Beach is a 10, 15 minute drive from that location. Okay, the problem I have with another Dollar General coming to this county is that Dollar General typically carries 80 or 90% of Chinese made goods, Chinese made merchandise. Okay, we don't need another store in this county pumping in crap products and taxing and taking dollars, vital dollars for our economic vitality away from us. That's exactly what's going on. Such, you know, Dollar Generals, what are they doing for the community other than coming here under the guise of a developer who's going to tell everyone, oh, there's a new store, and, and kind of leave out the point, oh, it's going to be another Dollar General. Okay, so another Dollar General is coming that's going to maybe employ four or five people tops. I, I, I feel like if someone would take a, a moment to sit down and do the economics or the math on that, that's probably a bad situation and a bad decision for the county. And I'll just leave that there. Thank you, sir. Anyone else for the board? You want to lie? All right, we will close the public hearing. Um, we had our ordinance by title only. This now will contain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Moody. We have a second, Paul.
I was just going, when you get to that point, it's just going to be a roll call.
Roll call, yeah, sure.
I second it.
Second, my name, that's correct. All right, all in favor?
The roll call vote, so Commissioner Fiegel?
No.
Commissioner Demp?
Yes.
Commissioner English?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
All right, we will move on to the next under general business, uh, move number 20 up, so we're jumping down to, uh, 20. The board to discuss county jail operation as intended by Mr. Dave English to tell. See, this is really just a follow-up from some of our budget discussions that we've been having. Uh, you know, we had requested constitutional officers to, you know, come back with a reduction of their budgets. And, yeah, I think that we had the, had the supervisor reelection should come back with 13%. The clerk, he was at 6.9. Uh, the tax collector was at, you know, between 5 and 8%. And we would ask, you know, uh, Mr. Wiggins, if he could kind of give us a confirmation on what he can do. And our property manager didn't have anything, just released, you know, she was particularly frustrated, said she's just keep looking. And then, you know, the sheriff, he had brought back, he had kind of had to supack it with the, uh, jail operations and I think that right somewhere. Anyway, uh, the county taking over the jail operations for, uh, 3.3 million dollars is what they got on that, that budget, you know, while, you know, it's a 3.3 million dollar budget, but shifting it over to the county is really not reducing the overall budget there. That's just kind of shifting money from one location to the other. So, you know, we still, if that's what we're doing, then I mean, I guess for the sheriff, I mean, we just need to, uh, the 3.3 million dollars, we really need you, you guys to identify, you know, what that 3, 3.3 million dollar represents. And I mean, if it's 20 employees, whatever it is, you know, hey, salary per employee, uh, the, the insurance benefits, the, just everything that breaks it down. And if you guys were okay with the, you know, for, I mean, I guess our transition period would be October 1, because I would, I would say that would, that would be.
I'd rather get this done before July. Because if y'all going to take the jail back over, then you going to have to know how to fund it. And it has to be funded whether you run it or whether I run it. That don't make no difference. You can't run that jail without money to operate it.
I understand.
You wind up with yourself in all kind of lawsuits every day, every week. It just has to be funded, okay? You see what I'm talking about? We ain't trying to beat y'all out of money or nothing. We just trying to operate. And I will not turn a budget in that I can't operate on. Period. I'm not going to do it. Well, if you can run it cheaper and you can run it better, sir, you have it.
I think we're on that situation over and there's nothing, I don't think there's nothing.
We'll give you, we'll give you an itemized first. If you want something itemized, we'll give you something itemized. But I don't want to wait until after the first and then decide what we going to do, we ain't going to, we didn't know before that.
Well, I mean, that was my next, you know, question. Would you be okay with the administrator maybe working closely with them?
Yes, sir. Anything she wants to do, I've always supported her out here.
To, you know, to kind of understand that budget and, and what all, you know, comes with that budget as far as the salary and such.
We'll be glad to.
But that still doesn't, you know, because we're going to have to work to see what we can shave off, but that still doesn't reduce anything. So that still leaves you guys with a 6 million dollar, roughly 6 million dollar budget. So we would like to see you guys.
That includes school resource and everything. We have a lot of moving parks, and this has, this has to be funded. If you do this right here, okay? I don't know why, I used to knock my face tissue one today. It's your place to find things, okay? I, I know we got 2.115. If you know the government is doing everything again, get rid of property taxes. And if that comes about, then you're going to be capped that, that going to lead to a 3 million dollar going to pay that you're not going to get. Go ahead and move a million right now. Get it tapped out. Blame it on me. Tell everybody this one, tell everybody this county. Wayne Page may need to do this. I don't care. But we have got to take care of this county. Where are we going to be next year? Where are we going to be the year after that? We're going to be broken, and you're going to have nothing to work with if we don't get some money coming in, get some revenue coming in. You blame it on me, but you get that done, sir.
I'm not saying we won't have to increase anything, but.
We going to have, we got to wake up. And you said the other night, quit kicking the can down the roof. No, kick the can down the roof, then kick it back to the room on the constitutional law. Y'all beating on us trying to get our money. And I understand you in the fight, we all in the fight. We did not make 2% leave this area. That's not our fault. And it's not your fault. But we have to have money to operate.
Yeah, I, I understand, but I, I may, for best folks showing the tax.
I'll give you an itemized, I'll give you a law enforcement itemized, and I can give you a one for the jail. Again, you want one?
Showing taxpayer the reduction in budgets.
I don't have enough room to cut. If I didn't go get grants and have a grant rider If I did go get grants and have a grant writer, we write these grants and get every grant we possibly could get, I'd probably be back over asking for more money. That's why I give your money back every year. I have worked diligently every year since I've been elected to give your money back. And I'm still going to do that. But if you cut, I ain't going to allow them to give you the money back. We're going to have to cut 13 positions, six off the road, six hundred and fifty.
You have a finance director.
I do.
And if you can, your finance director can work closely to go find money, then maybe that's where you would need to stop.
We do finally find every grant we possibly can. We work it. If their job wasn't important, if the judge, their job wasn't important on the roof, it wouldn't be there.
I understand.
He told that $1.3 million cut, what you're asking me to do? That's terminate 13, all we got is people, all we got is services, all we have is services for the county. We service the county. That's all I got.
I understand. But we still have to show that we can reduce our budgets.
I will turn the budget in.
Our first priority is not just going to increase taxes.
I'm going to turn the budget in. If I have to operate on them, if you don't approve it, that's fine, okay? You do what you got to do, I'm going to do what I got to do. I want to do what I got to do to take care of this county. Steen Hatchie, Shady Grove, and I cannot do it without laying 13 people off. Okay?
And...
You got something you want to say? Tell me.
If I did, I would say...
Thank you very much. I can't cut, I don't have that to cut. And I'm going to stand up here and say one thing, go tell somebody it's not bad either. We can't cut that.
I think what you're saying is any kind of adjustment is going to lower your ability to provide that, sir.
We will. And we worked hard to keep law enforcement, Steen Hatchie, we worked diligently to do that.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I do appreciate it. And I have heard from folks down that way. So I mean, what I want to understand is, from your perspective, any reductions are going to come at the sacrifice of...
All we have is people, all we have is people working. If their job wasn't important, they wouldn't be there to start with. We have to have, we have to try to stay where we're at. No one else to tell you, no one else to do it. I can't pull it out of a magic hat and tell you what to do.
I can't either, but I can't...
I wish I could, but I can't.
I just know we got to go find $3.3 million, and we're just looking at...
So then what we going to do next year? No one we going to do to get around to that? No one we going to do to get around to that?
That's our budget every year.
We going to go broke.
I mean, we can't just get to the reserves. I mean, I heard that's good reserve, that's going to increase taxpayers. I mean, that's just all the wrong directions.
Yep, just keep kicking the can down the river. Whatever.
Anything else?
I'll turn my budget in, you do what you got to do, I'm going to do what I got to do. Thank you, sir.
Are you all good with the county administrator working with jail?
Oh, yes, yes, ma'am. Hundred percent.
All right. Thank you.
All right, we'll go to Adam 17, the board to discuss Montrale Road, which is by the county administrator.
If I may, Mr. Chairperson, can I have Mr. Walter Rowl come to the podium and explain what he's been trying to explain to me for some time about Lawrence Rowell Road?
Thank you, Walter. I take note that you said my things do change. The Lawrence Rowell, let me begin by saying Lawrence Rowell Road is not named after my daddy to honor him. Lawrence Rowell Road was named that because it's in a subdivision that he created. Subdivisions prior to 1970 were not meant, it was not mandated that they be reported as subdivision flats, so far as I can tell. The Lawrence Rowell Road was built, if you read your packet, did you get to read it, Comrade?
I read some of it.
Okay, did you see your wife's signature on it?
I did.
Anyway, it was built by Gary's grandfather, Wilbur Knowles, as the county V6 operator. And I think it was built when J.C. Knowles was the superintendent or the supervisor out at the county road camp. So it being built by the county should indicate something. The other thing is, is that, in the early days, the requirement for building a road was that there be a 40-foot right-of-way designated, and that's what was designated out there. Some of those deeds overlap drastically, and it's a mess. But the subdivision itself exists, and the Lawrence Rowell Road was built by the county, and there has been a fence erected on the Lawrence Rowell Road that stops me from having access to my property. And I'm asking that the county require the people that erected the fence to remove it. I had dealt with special land surveyors to, the mappers and surveyors, to mount a... Do y'all have a copy of the survey?
Yes.
You got a copy of the survey in your package?
No, I've got some measuring ones.
The survey was completed when we purchased the property. If you read all of your packet, I wouldn't say that you know how to read legal. I have been blessed to have been trained by Professor Fisher in college and by my brothers who are all inland surveyors. Sorry, Thomas, I'm out, I think, but I'll go from the chair. I know how to read a description, and I know how to do a title search. I can't do an abstract for you, but I know how to do one. And I did that, and it's in that information that I gave you, all those deeds. All of those properties start at a section line, and move 200 feet, and then they go on over into the subdivision. The reason for the 200 feet was Mr. Reggie Wentworth, that was Alton Wentworth, that died here a few years back at 145 years old. That was his father. It deeded the land to the church. It's in that packet that you've got. It was a 200-foot strip that went all the way out to Alton Wentworth Road. After that, the rest of that property was sold to my dad, who developed it as a subdivision in that's the county to go in and build the road. If you go out there and look at it, you can see the crown of the road on both sides where it goes in, where it shaped up, and you can see fences all in those roads. What happens when you allow your right-of-ways not to be maintained is that you lose them, except for people that remember. My goal is not to win, my goal is to be right. I'm attempting to leave my business in order for my children. All I do, I don't want them to have to deal with this kind of mess. So the Lawrence Rowell Road, as those deeds will indicate, is a public right-of-way. As those deeds will indicate, I mean, I don't know, you know much, you don't do title work too much, I don't suppose, but deeds generally, a lot of deeds start at the center line of a county road, and they describe the property from there. What happened up there is they tried to do meets and bounds surveys, and surveys based on measurements, and they combined them. And when they combined them, they got deed overlaps all through it. So the deed, my deed calls for, and if you will find it in your packet, you will see that it calls for a road that was deeded from First Federal Savings and, or a property that was deeded from First Federal Savings and Loan to Mark Lee. Mark Lee deeded the property to us. And it says on there, if you start at that section line, you go 190 feet to a county road right-of-way. The next property over starts 45 feet beyond that, and it was deeded to Mr. Phelps by my dad. So you got 90 feet, then you got 130 feet. That's where his property starts, Mr. Phelps. That verifies that it's a 45-foot right-of-way, speaking primarily of the east and west section of the road. The other part of it's where all the deed overlaps. My request is that you ask them to remove that fence off that right-of-way so that I can give you my property.
What you're saying, Walter, is that fence is on that 45-foot.
That fence is in the center. They put the fence up in the center line of the 45-foot.
In other words, that 45-foot is what the county should be maintaining.
Not maintain.
Well, they did maintain part of it at one time.
Let me, let me, that fact that Dale did was states on there that they never did maintain that portion of that road. They maintained the rest of it, and I'm not asking you to maintain it. I'm just asking you to...
You just don't want them to build on it.
That's right. It's just like Steen Hatchie. You've got streets all over Steen Hatchie that you haven't cleared, and you haven't accepted maintenance on those right-of-ways. You've got right-of-ways all over the county that you don't maintain, and I don't ask you to maintain it.
In other words, what you're saying is, they do not legally own the property that they built the fence on.
Yes. What they did, their deed also for it to start at the center line of the county road, and you can find that in there if you look at it. It says that the deed starts, well, it starts at the section line, and goes 450 feet, I think, maybe 445 feet. Then it moves to the center line of a county road. That's where the point of beginning starts. And then from there, they go along the west right-of-way line of the county maintained road all the way out to Alton Wentworth Road, which it would say State Road 14, because at that time, county did not own that road. And then it goes along the right-of-way line of CR 14 or Alton Wentworth Road to a point that's, I can't remember the exact measurement, then they pull up off of the south 40-line, and they go from that, because it's on an arc. They pull off of that south 40-line, and then they go there, then they go back up to 210 feet, which is 90 feet plus 20 feet, which is the center line of the county road, then they go back to the point of beginning. The fact that they put the fence up in the center line of the road verifies that they acknowledge that it's a road.
Is there a point in the road that's set as a corner or as a survey pin that...
Yes, sir. There's a pin set in the middle of the road. Wade Cruz, my nephew, went out, he's not a surveyor, he's like me. He's worked around rowels that are surveyors all his life, and he now calls himself J. D. Cruz LLC Land Surveying, but he's not a licensed surveyor. That person that did that mapping there is a licensed surveyor, and in fact, he makes it there that he knew when that road was built, and it's obvious.
Right, but I think variable there is, if there's a set marker, doesn't that determine where that point would be for representation?
Yes, and...
Or representation, or plus or minus. It's where that particular location is, correct?
It starts at, the marker is, the way the deed reads, it says it starts at 400... I can't get why it is. It starts, and it goes at the center line, it starts 120 feet from the section line at the center line of county road right-of-way. What's county road right-of-way mean? So if it's at the center line of the county road right-of-way, there's 20 foot on that side, then there's 20 foot on the other side. Right?
It's a 45-foot right-of-way.
Forty, 20 and 20.
So that would be the math I learned in Taylor County.
Yes, sir. So if you put, if you put a reference, I mean, the road in front of my house starts in the center line, it's Marston Road, it's a paved road, it starts in the center line of Marston Road. That's what my deed starts with. I don't own that road. I can't put a fence up down the center line of that road. If I did, you'd be out there jumping all over me. You know, if you go out to Leon Ward, it's just one of them I pulled up because it was a subdivision that I was involved in. It wasn't a subdivision originally, it was, it wasn't a planted subdivision originally. It was a subdivision, and he got caught right in the center of when subdivision flats were being required, so he had to go back and do a flat to complete the subdivision. But the deeds start at the center line of the road. If you look at the vast majority of the roads in Taylor County, or the properties in Taylor County, they'll start at the center line of the road. That doesn't give us permission, doesn't give us the ability to go in and put a fence up down the center of it because that deed starts there. You got something?
Walter, just to, I want you to come here, if you will, just to simplify...
Okay.
...what I think that I understand. Okay, so, and you tell me if I'm wrong, but this is looking at Lawrence Rowell Road.
Yes, ma'am.
And this is all your property right now. Here's the church.
Yes, ma'am.
And here's a fence that's not disputable.
Right.
And then coming straight from Lawrence Rowell Road is this county-owned strip...
Yes, ma'am.
...right here. And as you can see, I think this is where you're saying that the fence is.
Yes, ma'am.
And so I just wanted to make sure that I understand.
Yes, ma'am.
And this is simplified, if anybody else wants to look at...
That's a good representation.
...a simplified version, you know?
The issue, here's where I wound up here. I started this about a year ago, and I talked to the Wanda about it, and it cut, put off, and put off, and put off, and put off. And now, they went out and erected a fence down the middle. And so if we had dealt with it then, there wouldn't have been a fence there. But we didn't, we lost it, we dropped the law. But the question that the Wanda had was that, well, and I think, I don't know if anybody else is involved in it or not, maybe you work on red, I don't know, but there's no deed to it, you say. Well, that is true. There was no deed made to the county, but there was a designated right-of-way. Well, under 95.361, it is a road. And let me tell you why. Because under 95.361, if the county constructs the road...
Because under ninety-five three sixty-one, if the county constructs the road and maintains the road for four continuous years pursuant to that statute, then it becomes a prescribed easement to the county, to the people. Now, the question is, what was the width that the county maintained? That's the big question here, um, to your analogy.
You're, you're absolutely right, in a way.
Now, how do you determine what the width is? You know how we do that. We go back and we find out who graded it. Is it a graded road? How did they maintain it? And how wide is that?
Okay, so if you go look at Alton Wentworth Road, I'll just throw it up there. Alton Wentworth Road is a hundred foot right of way. It used to be State Road fourteen.
You don't maintain a hundred foot? No, 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 no. When there is a question of whether in fact.
Okay.
Whether in fact, a road is a public road, you go under, you know, ninety-five is statute limitation statute under Florida law. It's ninety-five point three sixty-one. And I wrote a letter to, uh, Ms. LaWanda, sent a copy of it to the clerk. And let me read you the letter, okay? I don't know what.
Alright.
And I, I mentioned some other things in here. Dear LaWanda, after having met with you and read the latest email from Mr. Walter Rowell, and considering that he is requesting an answer from the county, number one, notify Mr. Rowell that you're going to put it on the next agenda to let the board make a decision. That's what you're here for today.
Yes.
You know, let's, let's get it done.
Right.
Okay. Two, get with me to prepare what you found the county has done with the road. In other words, get me the, get me the evidence of what the county has done with regard to this, to Lawrence, uh, Rowell Road. Okay?
Alright.
Did the county construct it? That's, that's A. B, has the county maintained it? And what portion? What was the county, what was maintained? What portion was maintained? They all get under ninety-five three sixty-one. How long has the county been maintaining it? Maintaining that portion? And D, is there any evidence of a conveyance to the county at any time? And as we said, there's not one, right?
Okay, that's correct.
Okay, so, so, I enclosed a copy of ninety-five three sixty-one to LaWanda. I also enclosed a copy of three thirty-six oh nine, three thirty-six ten, three thirty-six twelve. That's for purposes of closing a road. Okay, just to let my clients know, which is the Board of County Commissioners, uh, what, what I think most respectfully is the issues in your, you know, in your request. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I, I concede that the county has not maintained this road. This portion, portion of the road. Not well. Wait a minute. Alright. Let me borrow Pam's, Pam's map here. You, you saw the survey. You, you're looking at it. You see, uh, there's a deed in that packet that calls from, from First Federal Savings and Loan that deeded this property along County, uh, right of way.
Okay, I'm saying, okay, I, I understand what you're saying.
Do you agree with that?
Well, probably so, but the question is, Mr. Rowell, just to be brutally frank with you. To, to prove a point, to go, like you're going to Tallahassee. You're going to Pensacola, come back to Tallahassee. That's what you're doing here.
Okay.
You're, you're proving it in the abstract or in the opposite. That's what you're doing.
That's what I had to do.
And I don't know that that's the way to do it.
Okay, well.
And I'm being brutally, brutally frank.
But this, this is, uh, this is what's, what's happened out there. When this road was constructed, it was straight. It went straight in, ninety degree over, and comes straight out. Well, the motor grader operators have started making a U out there. And in their so doing, they have started grading over into our property. And they've started cutting into my concrete driveway that comes out. So, the deed to this property here, and the deed to this property here leaves a forty foot strip that is not deeded. And it's referred to in every one of those deeds as a county right of way. The deeds are establishes the forty-five foot.
Does it say it's a forty?
Forty foot, pardon me.
Forty foot right of way in the deeds? Does it say?
No, no, it does not. It says, it says that, it's a, it, this property deed right here says it's along a forty foot, it's along a county right of way. This deed here is, it leaves a forty foot gap in it. That's what I'm telling you. Okay, so, now, I'm sure you'll remember, because your mind is a lot sharper than mine, because you were a lot younger than me. When I was on this mission prior, we had an issue come up with a road. And they said it wasn't a county road. And the remnants will reflect this. You go back, I pulled it up in the 10th of May.
Is that the one where the guy from California deeded a road to the county and we never accepted it?
That's it.
Okay.
That's it. This happened to be.
You remember what I'm talking about?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But do you remember, do you remember when we had a request from, uh, Jim Witten? He asked me, why wasn't we maintaining this road? So I asked the road department. They said, well, it's not a road, not a county road. I said, well, it used to be. Well, there was a gap in my service. I said, well, it used to be a county road. Well, it happened. So we had a board meeting. And we were informed that all of the county road department records had been lost.
I remember that.
You remember that? Alright, we got Richard Sheffield to go make the list. Well, it was actually, it was actually Andy. Richard was, uh, up there.
Richard started it, though.
Well, he may have started it. So Andy went out and he identified all of these roads.
Two old men trying to remember stuff. This is what's happening right now.
Well, you know, what I found out is usually whenever you've got an issue that concerns you, you'll get more interested in it. And I've done a lot of digging, and really I have. I've done a lot of research on it. But, um, they lost all the records to the county roads. It used to be a fellow out there by the name of Nobby that kept the records. He was very meticulous. Every load of lime rock that went out, every load of dirt that went out, every gallon of gas was burned, he kept up with. But he retired, and some more folks took over out there. But during the time when I was out, all of the county road department records got lost. County road department records would identify them. In fact, uh, I've got, uh, a professional surveyor and mapper are looking for those former records that showed this road on it. But that one there, that you're looking at there, that was in nineteen.
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight. You know, that goes back to, all the way back to nineteen ninety-eight. That was before I, there was even an issue with it. It shows that, uh.
Pretty sure.
Porter, Commissioner, please, I've got a question. Just a minute.
Okay, so, Walter, uh, do you plan to do anything with this property?
Yes, ma'am. I, I intend to try to build two houses on that property.
On, on your, on your part of that, you're gonna build two houses?
The part that they've got me thin software. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you, actually, then you need that open. So you're gonna build, what'd you say, two houses?
Yes, ma'am.
And you need access to that. And of course, two houses would bring in added lawn taxes, what we really, really need.
Well, I, I have a different purpose in it. I, I wanna do it for my grandchildren. And, uh, maybe they want to live in them, or, or maybe, maybe they'll just run them out. I don't know what they're doing with their property, run them out. They want to be covered on their home, see, things like that.
Moving forward, so, what do we need to do to verify this, uh, we know, uh, Mr. Rowell brought his verification, but we're not gonna just go ask someone for the fence without verifying ourselves?
Well, the problem that we have in this is this. Is this. Number one, there's no deed. Okay, we got an agreement on that. We need to know when the road was constructed. Did the county construct it? And what width have they maintained it to proceed under ninety-five three sixty-one? So now, let's go a little bit further. Say, for instance, that county did construct it. They did maintain it for four continuous years. And the width is, whatever the width is, is this fence on that property. That's in, that is in violation of our ordinance.
Say that again, it's in violation of the ordinance.
Of our ordinance. Yeah, you can't put a fence up on county.
Right, right, right. Well, there's more, two things I'd like to ask you to do. I'd like to ask you to ask them to remove the fence. Or I'd like for you to give me a written letter that's saying that you don't claim that property right now. You don't claim that right of way. That's, give me one of the two. I give you an option. Give me a, give me a letter.
But before I would write that letter.
Yes, sir.
I would have my questions answered by county staff. With respect to that, are you following me, LaWanda?
Yes, sir, and I think I can answer most of the questions. I can go back to the, um, the roads of Taylor County that was approved by the board in July of nineteen ninety-nine. And Lawrence Rowell Road is listed as a county maintained road with a width of eighteen feet. Now, um, we had our public works department go out and check that road and mark it every five hundred feet. And those measurements come in closer to twenty-four, twenty-five feet. So, so it's, it's not the, the, and it's, does not include the area according to our public works director where the fence is. Correct, Mr. Rowell? That, that's outside of the area that we maintain.
It's outside of the area that you created.
Yes, sir.
But why? Because there's a fence here.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. Did I, did y'all tell me that you had a request not to maintain that road?
So, no, I think.
Wait, yeah, you, you told me, we sat right there in your office. And the road director said, oh, but that was Andy McLeod. I, I didn't, I didn't do, I said, that requires more action for you to stop maintaining the road. Well, if you stop maintaining the road, one of your things gonna happen. It's gonna grow in. If a man puts a fence up on that road, motor grader can't get there to grade it. It's the superintendent's job for the road. I don't know what they'll call it now, but it's his job to, when somebody puts a fence up there, to go in there and have him to move it.
When did they put the fence up in Lawrence?
Uh, I don't know.
I see nineteen sixty-seven. He was Lawrence Rowell and Devon Magnet. You know the people?
No, yeah, I know everyone of them. Lawrence Rowell's my dad. He's the one that created subdivision on that.
Mr. Beck Smith, he probably repressed it that time.
Who, what?
I see Beck Smith's name was on this.
Beck Smith was a tax collector. He's the one, he's the one that poked those fruit up the stretch, if you want to roll through tonight. He doesn't bend lynch.
I think that the fence has just been put up. It's not wrong.
Yeah, it just got put up. But there, there is a fence. There is a fence there within the crown of the road. You know, roads, roads have cranes. And there is a fence that's been put up inside that crown.
It's a, it's a, uh, a road?
No, it's a dirt road.
Okay.
But a dirt, you know, it's, it's got a crown.
Yeah.
You know, you can see the crown if you go look at it. You can see the crown of the road. And the fence has been put up all the road, not outside the crown. And therefore, it is now where the graders can't grade it. Or can't maintain it. I mean, they would at least mow the shoulders. Wouldn't they? So, the one end of it, they come out and they mow the shoulders. You know, because there's no fence there. But when they get to the fence, they have to pull their hordes in and go around the fence.
Okay, did y'all sell a man their property? You, you're talking about, I suppose a man owned their property, right?
My dad sold the property.
Did this, did no people?
Yeah, this Johnson, yeah, Mr. Johnson, yeah.
Moving forward, the real, to go verify these items. And
the only way you can do it is to hire an ab, get an abstract on it. That's the only, you wanna hire and get an abstract on it? I, I'm willing to say, let's go for it. You know, y'all get an abstract on it, you can verify who, what, or how.
Mr. Walter, don't we need a, don't we need a title, title search as well?
That's one, that's, that is an abstract. Title search and abstract's the same thing.
Okay, well, then my question is, we, we would need a survey and a title search, right?
You would have to get a survey and you would have, no, you would have to get a survey. I don't think, I don't know, contact, they probably know. If you can get a title search just off of the deeds. Once you get the who owns what, then you can go out and get a survey made to verify where the actual right of way at really is.
So, the way the board has moved forward, advised staff to move forward with title search on this property.
Something to say before you do.
Go ahead.
Can I approach, can I approach?
Yeah, if you got something, come on.
Absolutely.
My name is Jesse James Vessick. I live down there on, on, on Port Hightown. I'm in the midst of all this that you're talking about here tonight. As a member of the church.
You speak up, please.
As a member of the church, we had a number of issues with, uh, Walter. We had a situation last year where we didn't know what was going on. He was out there just clearing land with the behind our church. There's been problems or anything else for years and years, that church was sitting there. And he started clearing dozers. The pastor called me, asked me to go down and see if I could figure out what was going on. Well, I'll tell you what was going on. He was out there clearing land on the, on church property. Those trees been there for this wooded area. It's probably been there fifty, sixty years. I don't know all this jargon that's going on about a road. But there is no maintenance in, in the middle of the woods, full of trees that are fifty, sixty years old. A church has been sitting there for about sixty years. There's no road there. I doubt there's ever have been a road there. Now, after, you know, Mr. Rowell here turned around and tried to run my wife over with a bulldozer. And we got photographs of that, too. So, you know, he saw her filming because the pastor was in the hospital, his wife did surgery, and she was asking to go down. So we took pictures. Mr. Rowell out there with his dozer, tearing all these trees up on the church. After he tried to run her over, we had a confrontation. Didn't call the law at that time. But, uh, we decided we're going to have a survey there, the church did. That was a church body. And church ordered to survey. Actually, one of his relatives come in there, he surveyed the property, certified it. And we used that survey for a fence. Mr. Rowell himself said, fences make for good neighbors. And since he's trying to run this over bulldozer stuff, I figured it might be a helpful thing to have a fence there. So I presented this to the church. The church agreed. We hired a contractor to come out and put a fence. In the meantime, he's planting pine trees on church property. I didn't know you could plant pine trees on other people's property or on county roads. I didn't know that at all. But apparently, you know, Mr. Rowell thinks that's a go, okay thing to go forward and do. We went ahead and erected a fence and put it inside the surveys that we had done this past year. And in the midst of doing this, Mr. Rowell got so nasty, we had to trespass him. I didn't, but it was the pastor of the church who trespassed him. And had, had to call the law two times the day of the contractor that had to put the fence up. We set the fence, put it inside the property line as survey. Our survey shows no roadway there. There's no reasonable human being that would call that a roadway. I don't know what he's talking about needing it for, for access to. I don't know what he's talking about needing it for, for access to his property. He's got Walker Road, which is a horseshoe road that goes all the way around his property. Right in front of his property there. So, I'm not sure exactly what he's talking about there either. Lot of confusion. Of course, we know he's not a very truthful man. Because, uh, there's other record on that. He accused my wife of pulling a gun on him the day of the fence being put up. He's not a very nice fellow, I'll tell you that.
What's your, yeah, ask a question. You're stating that your fence was erected per monuments that were placed by a licensed surveyor?
That's correct. That's correct.
And actually, you're saying-
I wasn't even expecting to talk to y'all about this tonight. I, I didn't bring a survey. I've got, they got the survey at church. I've got pictures, I don't know if Conrad can look at it.
No, sir, your, your fencing is inside of the survey area on the depicted church property.
On, on church property, off the property line that was there.
Yes.
Who's surveying it for?
Give me a second, I might be able to pull it up. The survey. Under the seal of, uh, Stephen, Stephen McMillan, I think, is, is JW Cruz LLC, prepared by JW Cruz. JW Cruz LLC. And has a seal on there from Stephen Miller on the survey.
Now, the piece of license surveyor records.
According to Walter Miller, Ward, uh, was it Ward or Martin? Anyway. Wade, thank you. Wade was not a licensed surveyor. Now, I don't know if he's working for a licensed surveyor. I'm not sure exactly how this stuff works. But when you pay somebody to do a survey and they give you a survey with a seal, you think you wanna trust it pretty good as a legal document.
But that was a survey just provided to the church. That wasn't filed with the courthouse or anybody of that magnitude?
They don't file surveys at the courthouse.
But there's a license- We did have a seal on your documentation.
I'm sorry?
There's a licensed surveyor's seal on this-
Yes, absolutely, I could produce that, that's right. There's a licensed survey seal on this survey that we use. And that survey doesn't show any road. It shows a twenty-foot section on the outside of the church property that's called unknown parcel. I don't know what that means. Maybe that one time that maybe the county was planning something there. I don't know.
So, in the legal description of your property, you have no reference to the county roadway?
Absolutely not, other than Walter Row Road, which is the horseshoe road that the county currently maintains. That, that brings him into his own property anytime he wants. He can drive in, in and out of his property through new different directions.
And the entire horseshoe, none of that's blocked off, right?
None of it's blocked off, no, sir.
Now, if you were there today, has part of that road marked off at the end of the, uh, you drive up to the west?
We have never blocked-
You drive straight up to a fence, don't you guys, right?
We have never blocked Walker Road, no, sir. Like I say, he, he sat there and lied to the deputy that was there that day. If you want to pull the body cams of that, I'm sure, I missed-
Messick, your wife, he had to tell her to put the gun up?
Of course we had a gun. But nobody ever pointed a gun at this man.
I didn't have to point it at him.
And we had five witnesses that attested to that.
She pointed it at me.
Which is a lie.
Just address the board.
Yes, sir. Okay, I'll address you, sir. Yeah.
My question is, Mr. Messick, are you referring to Lawrence Row Road, not Walter? Okay. So, Lawrence Row, this is Lawrence Row Road right here. Wait, wait, you're, and this is Mr. Row's property? And I think this is, this is the church?
Yes, correct.
Correct? Okay. Okay. Just for everyone's information. There, this is the prescribed easement. You see the, the line? That's the prescribed easement that the county maintains.
Uh, which is Lawrence Row Road?
Yes, sir.
Jamie, should I address that?
And that fence is only a foot. You see where the dogleg is there on property line that where it joins his? That fence is running from that corner of that property line to the, to the inside corner and back to the back of the property. And a foot inside the property line as we had survey. And as you can see in your own photograph, does that look like a road to you?
Mr. Chair, as, as most of us know, it's been here a long time. The county has had situations, and there's one in Shaggy Grove. There's been several in Hatchet, but the one in Shaggy Grove, if you don't remember, Conrad, I know you will remember this. Between McLean Road and fourteen, uh, McLean Road, that's behind the community center. Was somewhere between McLean Road and fourteen, there was a strip of property through there that, uh, and you couldn't tell that the county owned it. It was grown up, but it did belong to the county. And remember, we, we resolved that issue. But so just because property has not been graded and maintained, does not mean that it does not belong to the county. Because we've seen this quite a few times where it's not maintained, but it still belongs to the county. Now, I'm not saying where that this road belongs to the county or not. I, I think we need to do a title search, clear this thing up, and then go on about our business. Let's go keep, uh, with this stuff right here. Let's just, let's live on, let's get a title- Now, I have to understand it, but I get through, you can talk. But what I think that we need to do is, is move forward. And let's get a, a title search, and then let's clear it up and see, see where we stand in terms of this road. Now, you can speak.
I think this is a legal matter that goes before a judge rather than sitting here before this, this board. Want to get general about this thing. I really do also, I want to throw this out there, think that it's time for the county to get out of the real estate business on return. You, you obtain the land you use, and use the land, and that's it. If you have land that's excess, you need, you need to dispose of it more enough. Now-
Not necessarily.
Yes, necessarily. I did not want my government in the landscape for, uh, uh, business, real estate business. We have realtors for that.
For the board, we talked about it. Obviously, when we got the spirit, he's here. So, even going to the judge, guess what? They're gonna come back and do a title search. They're gonna do the same, they're gonna do the title search, so we do.
We, we had a deed, we had a deed checked and by the, uh, the property appraiser's office. We had a gentleman there checking the legal descriptions of our deed. Because we had to get, had to get the deeds settled. The deed was never filed in courthouse when that property was paid off by the church. But we had receipts showing it was paid off by the church. Unfortunately, the people that sold it to the church back in the nineties, they, they passed away, so we couldn't count on them to do anything. But the deed is there. We had the, the, uh, the agreement with those people for the purchase of the property. The purchase was made, receipts were produced, everything is up and up. The deed was taken care of, and, and the legal description was, was double-checked by the property appraisers office for us. And that was before the survey. Survey just supports everything else we had already done. Uh, I don't know why Walter decided, he didn't even talk to the church. You know, all this could have been settled out a lot easier. There's no county road there, I'm telling you that right now. You can look up there, there's no county road.
When you had your outstanding, um, loan, I guess, against the property, was there a title search done at that point?
I don't know that, that a title search was done per se. I mean, we went back to the original agreement of the, uh, sale of the house, and I'm sure there was a title search done during the sale.
I mean, you financed it, you financed it, you showed that title.
So, you know that abstract company that may have done a title search?
I, I'd have to look at it and see, I'm not sure. I know that, I know that we had issues with the deed being, uh, registered in the courthouse after we found out all these fifty-year patients being mowed down. And, and members of church being mowed down with bulldozers and that sort of thing. After that all happened, we took action, and we started doing something about it. And, uh, I don't know about title search. I don't, I don't think one official title search was made at this time. I'm sure there was one made at the time that the, the property was sold to the church.
Would not depict rights away or, or language or that kind of description. Or an owner of that, right?
I would think that, um, that if they borrowed money, okay, the lending institution would require a survey and require title insurance-
Yes, sir.
Um, to show that, you know, the church owned the property, you know? Now, uh, and I'm sure that, I'm not sure, but I'm pretty sure that the, that your church has that title, uh, policy. And also a copy of the mortgage, and also a copy of the survey when the church purchased the property. Now, whether it's still there or not, you know, I don't know.
This is old news, old news.
Yeah, that's old news. Well, the issue, more than, let's just say hypothetically, this is just hypothetically, Walter, okay? They hypothetically that there's not a Walter, there's not a road, just hypothetically. Then the issue is probably between you and the church. On the other hand, hypothetically, if there is a road, which our records show that there is, because it's on the list, okay? And you can see the list, if, if, Miss LaWanda's got the list, when in fact that was done. Then, of course, the county may be involved. Otherwise, county shouldn't be involved in this situation.
Well, if that be the case, sir, I would want to request, you know, respectfully, that this board consider rescinding that easement tonight.
Well, we can't do that tonight. There's a procedure of closing a road that, uh, I've listed the statutes involved in that in my letter that I just read just a few minutes ago. It's three thirty-six point oh nine, ten, and twelve. It's in my head, uh, because that's how we close a road or abandon a road, sir. You just don't do it.
Well, let's move forward with that process.
Well, may I finish, sir?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, a petition has to be filed to do that, and there has to be a public hearing. And the, the public can come in and talk about it, just like you're doing today, uh, to determine whether in fact the, uh, county is going to hypothetically, again, to abandon this quote-unquote road. And of course, if people would come in and say, no, we don't want it abandoned, and now there's people saying it was, and then it would be up to the county. You following me?
Well, looking at the picture, you can see there's no road there.
Well.
And so, you know, so there's no physical road there. I'm saying that, you know, you might have a legal something that went back fifty years or sixty years ago, that they were thinking about getting a road at one time and decided to get in the real estate business to do that, and, and, uh, and here we are. But there's not been a road there, and there's no road there. It has, it would have to run through the church. I mean, there's no road there. You look at the dogleg there, it's all wooden, it's all heavy woods. These are the church trees.
Of course, there are defenses to that, uh, that you're saying that there's not a road there. There's, there's certain defenses that can be brought forth if it ends up in court to your favor, hypothetically, again. Uh, but I'm not gonna get into all of that, uh, right now.
I, I'm operating with common sense on this deal. I mean, I know there's a lot of legal stuff that you can throw around, and you can, if you go back and do, but I feel like that the, that this board should be able to move on something. If it is, if it even just recommends that you go and, and, and look into whatever it takes to get a public hearing just to get this piece of woods that the church owns, well, uh, released to the church if the county is holding it.
Well, let me tell you how that works. We've gotta, y'all probably gotta finish this. All right. If the, if, if the road is abandoned, and also we have the public hearing, and they close the road. What happens is, it goes to the adjoining landowners up to the middle of the road, okay? So, you get into another issue there that-
Well, according to, uh, Mr. Row, the imaginary road, uh, our fence is in the middle of it, so we're good.
Well, uh-
Okay, so, uh, we need to order a title search, is that what we need to do?
I think so, and, uh, uh-
I mean, we need to-
You gotta have, you gotta have a legal description to order a title search. You understand what I'm saying on that? I think that, that should be done. And I'd love to see your survey.
I can bring it to you, no problem.
Okay.
I can show you pictures of it now, if you wanna look at it.
No, I don't wanna look at the phone like that.
I understand.
I hope. I'd love to see your survey.
Anything, and I can bring it in to you? I mean, is there a, a place I can bring it to the county officer?
Mr. Chair, I have a question-
No, you can bring it to four eleven north of Washington Street.
Do a title search on this property?
Right, we have a motion to do a title search. Hold on.
Good question. Do we want a survey and a title search, or just a title search? Because I don't know that we have a legal description, right, Conrad? Do we need a survey?
Not that I know of. Do we have a legal description of the quote-unquote road?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Then I'll change my motion to, let's order a title search and a survey on this road.
And, and I will need funds to accomplish that, maybe, I, I don't think it would be over two thousand dollars for all of it. Because the title search may be complicated, and may take a little more to complete.
Survey needs to be done first, yeah.
Right.
But we have a motion to obtain a survey and a title search.
Yes, and I'll need, I'll need a transfer from, um, reserves or bank accounts.
Where we just gotta check the money from.
We got a motion on the table. Go ahead, Mr. Dillon.
Just a clarification. Are you, the title search footprint is going to be the church property? Because when you do a title search, you're gonna wind up doing one for a, a particular person.
Oh, for the roadway, you question?
Roadway doesn't have a deed.
But that's, I think, why you're doing a survey. Why you're wanting a survey and the title search for that area of property. Unless, unless I'm misunderstanding this, please.
Right.
It's for the roadway itself, not the church's property or-
Just for that, what we think, we think that we, we're saying that we have a road there.
Area of roadway.
So, we, we need a, a title search and a survey just to, um, so we can move on with this. And I hate, I hate for us to have to use taxpayer money to do this, but obviously, there's not gonna be any breath of lotion to this. And we have no choice but to, to do this.
So, you do have a choice.
Unfortunately.
What the survey will do, establish the property line-
Yes.
On Row's property and the church's property. And if it leaves a gap in there, that's the county's fault.
There you go.
That's what we're trying to-
Well, my survey does show that gap.
Uh-huh.
My survey does in fact show the twenty-foot gap.
Where?
It's actually on his side of the property line. And we had the survey done, I'm sorry, we had the survey done, that property line, uh, was, was true to our property that we ran, that we ran the fence on, twenty feet over to his side of that.
Well, Chair, I call for the question.
I was just asking a clarification, Commissioner.
Soon, soon.
When we're done talking.
Seven?
I said when we're done speaking, we will.
I, I have called for the question, and I think that I have a right to do that.
I'm gonna ask to speak, and we're gonna let him speak.
Conrad, can a commissioner call for the question at any time, and all conversations stop at that time? Is that correct? There you go.
All right, Mr. Dillon.
All I wanted to know was if the proper reference for the title search, is it the church property where we're talking about the western side of Lawrence Row Road? Or are you talking about the parcel immediately to the east of it, I think, which is owned by Mr. Row? Because we have looked at these deeds. Property appraisers looked at these deeds, and we don't see any issues with respect to what's being alleged today. I mean, it's been a year ago. If you have a survey that you are willing to provide, and you are willing to go back and see if there is a title search that you can forward to Conrad and staff, we will be happy to sit down with the property appraisers' office. David Goodman is very skilled at this effort. I draft legal descriptions routinely. It is not something that we can't sit down with the deed and draw a line.
I, I too would love to see something drawn about taxpayer money. I really would.
Fine, fine.
Yeah, that sounds good.
But we would draw your motion. You want to draw your motion?
Yes, I would draw my motion.
May I speak, uh, again, because there's some allegations been made, and I would like to speak too. One thing, he, he said after I put up his wife with the, I was wondering, tried to clear land?
Mr. Row, we're not going, we're not- Mr. Rowell, we're not going, we're not going back.
Well, I just, I just want to clarify that I was running track. You don't like... All right, all right. You don't like... All right, okay, Conrad, you asked a question, was there a title search done?
No, sir.
Okay, and if you looked at, if y'all looked at what was in the package, you would have seen that the property was sold under a contract for deed. There was never no mortgage involved in, on the church, is what you're talking about?
On the church, probably, okay.
All with that...
Of course, a contract for deed is sort of like a mortgage though, right, Walter?
It is, but it doesn't, didn't require title insurance and it didn't require, that's why we do them because we don't want to pay lawyers and title companies. I don't believe in lawyers, title companies and all that stuff, but anyway, but anyway.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Well, it's just an expense to, but a survey is too, I don't believe in surveys, I believe y'all can get along without it, but I do know how to read a description, I do, but there was not. Now, the best, Mr. Smith...
Yeah, I'm glad you got that up there.
Because I know David Goodman has been helping them against practical stuff. He's been doing, I didn't know this and I just realized that David is biased in what he's doing. And I just found out and I want you to look at that property that's designated as the church property. Do you see where that property line is on the east side there? Do you see it running through that woman's house? Do you see that? Does the church own that property in that woman's house? No, you know why? Because that is not an accurate description of the property. And they tell you on there, if you look, this is not a survey. Now, if you looked in your packet, which apparently nobody has, you would have seen a deed.
Oh yeah, I looked at it and I tried to study and it's, but plenty of names in that.
Okay, all right, go look, go look at the one from R.E. Wentworth to the church and you will see that.
I don't like anyone using that part over there as a, as a description.
Well, I want to make a point here, please. And I want to do this for Mr. Smith and the church, I want it back up. When I started clearing that property, I talked to Mr. Hall and I talked to the caretainer there and they told me of where they thought the property line was. Most of what I've done is storm damage and you can look at the top of the trees and you can see where the tornado broke the top of the trees out. But that being said, the original deed to the church was 200 foot from the section line south, Alton Wentworth Road. If you look at the deed on the Property Appraiser's map as they're using, it does not include that parcel. It only includes the second parcel. The second parcel, scroll it down just a little bit, and you can, other way.
Sorry.
You know, right there, the second parcel goes down that county road, well, you see where the county road is. The description calls for it to go down the west side of the county road. Well, that does everything over this way. So then it goes to some distance from that south, north-south 40 line on the left. Go back over this way. Okay, it comes down the road, goes up Alton Wentworth Road, then it references the 40 line going north and south and goes this way, so many feet, which would put it just to the right of that line that they've got drawn there. Okay, now, that's what the Property Appraiser has on the, on the church's deed, but there's two deeds. The one deed from Mr. Wentworth and then another deed from Morgan and Epps and whoever else, but guess who it goes back to? It goes back to my daddy. And if there is a gap left there that does not belong to the county, guess who it belongs to? It belongs to his heirs. I will have the property either way. So you can abandon it, you can do what you want to with it, but the property, original deed was deeded from my daddy to Mr. Morgan, to Mr. Smith, and it all left a 40-foot gap in there. But the deed from Wentworth to my daddy did not have the 40-foot gap in it. So do it either way you want to. I don't want to mess up with the church. I asked Mr. Hall to let's settle this out of court like Christian people spoke or settled in court, if we couldn't agree on it and not have no debates about it. Went out there to the property and he come running out there with his wife, you're trespassing, you're trespassing, we got a trespass warning against you, we got a trespass. I said, I don't know nothing about it, but if you don't own the property, I'll leave. And I would, and I'm glad to, I didn't want to be there, I didn't want to be there.
So looking forward, I think we have a plan for, you guys all to work with staff.
Well, he says he's going to provide you with a survey and they may have Wade Works under that man's license. And you know, and he may have a survey, but there again, that survey is going to start at the center line of a county roadway.
Well, we'll let Mr. Dudley and staff determine this.
Nope, it starts at the center line of the county roadway. They don't...
We'll let them determine that and we'll ask the board back to the board.
Okay, how long do you think this will take if I need to let my contractors know?
I don't think I can have it by the next meeting because that's only 15 days. I gotta have the agenda ready in a week.
Will you accept the fact that the county bill for the road?
Next meeting's on the 22nd.
Will you, will you accept the fact that the county bill for the road?
I'm not accepting anything at all.
No, I'm just asking, would you?
I'm telling you, no, because I don't think, I'm not accepting anything at all.
All right. But there again, and I'm sorry, Mr. Smith, but that's the way it is. If it doesn't belong to the church, it will belong to me because it's not ever been deeded.
All right.
Mr. Rowell, I know you feel that way, sir, but you...
We're going to the next round.
We left you.
We're going to Adam 16. The board consider approval of parcel of Hampton Springs Park property, agenda by the county magistrate.
Commissioner, at the last meeting where we discussed Hampton Springs, the potential sale of a parcel, of a portion of Hampton Springs Park, it was discussed during the meeting that this parcel should be six acres. So in your packets, there is a map that shows the potential dimensions of the parcel you may wish to sell. I did not want to move forward with a survey nor an appraisal until there was, you know, we were absolutely clear about the potential margins of that six acres.
You just need an approval on this, that everyone's looking at this, you just need an approval on this property here.
Yes.
Okay, before you move forward, I want to state again that I'm opposed to selling this property and the reason is because I feel like that this entire parcel is part of our history in Taylor County. I don't see how you can say that a portion is part of our history and another portion is not. But if we do move forward with this proposed sale, I think that some things need to happen. Just like she said, I think that we need an appraisal, a thank me to survey, a thank me to title search. And then when that's complete, I think that to be fair, that we should offer the landowners on the either side their first lot of refusal. We did that at Keaton Beach when we sold property there, we offered the adjoining property owners the first refusal. And then, and Mr. Mattingly may be one of those, there could be others also. And then I think that we should open up, put it out for bids for anybody to potentially buy this property.
We got to do one or the other.
Say it again.
I think we got to do one or the other, huh? I mean, I think it's got to go out for bids if we're going to do it, you know, with this...
Right, so, and Conrad can help me, so if you follow 12535, if the parcel is of an insufficient shape or size for a building permit, and I believe there's a value associated as well, $15,000, then you can offer it to adjoining property owners. So when the board sold the two parcels at Keaton Beach, one of them was offered to, there was only one adjoining landowner because the other side was the canal. And so the smaller parcel was offered to the adjoining landowner and he, he made a bid on it and the board accepted that, but the parcel across the road, on the Rida Road, that you could have built a house on according to our building officials, so that went out to bid, that was a more formal process.
I accept that.
Okay.
I accept that.
He is an adjacent landowner on the north side of that property. Mr. Mattingly is?
I said it probably is.
He is?
So there's probably other people that are adjacent to it, also somebody owns property around it.
You got a road up county road on that side and then on the south side of it, the next to David on the Big Four River.
Yeah, well, there are property owners like him, you know, anybody else.
I think that's definitely in the size and value of this piece, right? So that it really is, if it's determined by the appraisal, it would be offered for auction or for bid, not to the adjacent owner.
I believe so.
In value and size.
I believe so, yes.
Okay, one other question, Mr. Chairman. In this drawing, it looks like there's a small parcel inside, is this correct? I mean, I don't see it appear.
That's the wrong map, so the red, the parcel that is in the map
Yes.
that's marked in red is six acres, so...
There's not a small parcel inside of it?
I think that's just where the cursor landed, is that right?
I think so, yes.
I just want to make sure that this is a contiguous 5.9 acre.
There's not an island inside of it.
There's not an island inside of it. I just want to be understood as...
Oh, one piece.
I see.
And it is obviously road front, so there would be entry into that parcel if the board moves forward with the sale.
I'll make a motion to, let's go forward with it.
So if we did this, that, if we done this, then I guess we, if we done appraisal, would the board need to just set a minimum?
I believe that that's what we did last time. And I think, I think we've learned to go ahead and set a minimum.
Right, I understand, I don't, I think we would want to set ourselves up to have someone bring a little bid in and us have to reject it in the contract.
Right, it just delays the process, yes.
Better learn our lesson on that one.
Sergeant, we learned our lesson on that one.
So later maybe it's supposed to...
Same thing with right of refusal.
Sergeant.
Yeah, we always have...
I said, same thing with right of refusal. Anytime you sell anything.
The board can reject the bid, yes.
All right, someone from the public can do that. If you would, just state your name and address.
Hi, Damon, my name is Rhonda Smith. I thank you for allowing me to speak to you this afternoon in reference to Hampton Springs itself. I want to start off by gratefully giving you my heartfelt connection to this land. I was born in Taylor County, raised here in Taylor County, raised my daughter and who now is raising her family here. I am very proud of Taylor County and of our history. Although this site did not look the way it does today, I've been visiting the sulfur springs. I would try to imagine what it looked like and which I could go back in time to visit. It's hard to imagine that something so grand existed here in little old Taylor County. But the healing properties of the sulfur spring issue was a gift from God. Mr. Hampton was told by a local Indian woman that the spring would heal his wife's illness, which they did. I suffered from arthritis from my early teens and when I read the healing properties of sulfur spring, where on arthritis I sat many a day soaking my feet in that water. Believe you me or not, it worked. Hampton Springs Hotel is our history, my history, which I am extremely proud of as a Taylor County resident. I cherish it, preserve it, and will do whatever it takes to protect it. With that being said, all property owned by the county in this county belongs to the citizens of Taylor County and no one else. And as we, as a citizen resident of Taylor County, should be able to vote if any of that land is to be sold, is ours. Each of you were elected on the trust that you would do right by us, our interests, our land. What forward you are proposing without our input is not right or in our best interest. It's not yours to decide. Let the residents of Taylor County, the ones who really own Hampton Springs Hotel land, decide what happens, let us vote. Therefore, I'm requesting today the post-qualm of the approval of this land sale at Hampton Springs Hotel. Bear with me because it's a very sensitive place to you. I have emailed each of you. No camera on this.
Can I give her my three minutes as a public?
I have emailed each of you, I'm asking for explanation of funds from the land that would be spent with no response. I highly recommend that there be a DOGE review of county funds. Then there's something I want to draw to your attention. During March 18th board meeting, there was a discussion and reference to Foley Land and Timber Agreement and the land that they gave the county, which is currently the county homes. The agreement was after the property was no longer in use. As proposed, it was to be returned to Foley Timber Land. Further into the discussion, Mr. Newman was asked if he would like to address the matter and in doing so, he stated, "And the reality add, I don't believe they're not making any more property, Mr. Fisher. Here's what gets me. This land that was to be returned per the agreement, you're not wanting to let go, but yet you're wanting to sell our history land." This just does not add a hold onto land that you have no historical history, but willing to sell the land that does. In closing, I again thank you for this opportunity to speak and I am requesting that the board approval to seek any sale of Hampton Springs Hotel land to not, tonight to not be approved, but the decision be ours. The residents of Taylor County, let us vote. Luke 12:3, there is nothing concealed that will not be disclosed or hidden, that will not be made known. What you have said in the dark will be heard in the daylight. And what you have whispered in the ear in the inner room will be proclaimed from the rooftop. Let us vote, please.
My apologies. I'm 50 generation in Taylor County. My grandfather was a postmaster at Hampton Springs. Is an important place in this county. I don't think we need to be selling that land and I support 100% what you just received we had to say. say. We need to conserve our heritage. If we don't do that, what we got left? Nothing. That's all I got to say, thank you.
Thank you, I'd like to approach the board again, because this is a very touchy subject matter, and my heart, my sympathies go out to the individuals that are born and raised in this county, and that do, they do have a history, a memory of that folks being special, and being something important to them and their families. So, you know, I'm not gonna sit here and hammer away at you guys, because the reality is, is the governor already has individuals that's prepared to come and hammer away at you. Okay, so, I'm not necessarily here to accuse anyone of mishandling funds, but I'll be honest with you two, if I was to just do a rough survey of the county, I would imagine about eighty percent of the constituents in this county would accuse you guys of such. Okay, so, what I'm asking is, is it the board's capacity to perhaps consider using a part of that land as some means of a residual income to go back to the county? Is that in your capacity or not? Like, for instance, if it's six acres land, why don't we take two acres or three acres, maybe, let's, let's, let's be conservative, let's say, take two and a half acres of it and develop it into a very exclusive RV spot, okay? Because I wanna tell you guys that North Florida is a treasure, okay? It's a very enchanting, very mysterious, and alluring place to a lot of people in the world. There's a lot of fascination with this state simply because it is the state that it is. It's the state with palm trees and the houndgaters, okay? It's the state with the history layered over history, layered over history. So rather than the board consider, well, let's just sell this piece of history that goes back beyond even the founding of this town, beyond, there was, before there was a Taylor County, that spring was there, and people used that spring. I've gone to that spring. I'm an amateur musician, I go there, and I write music at that place. I take my daughter there, okay? You're, you're, we're not talking about a derelict building that the county owns, we're talking about taking something that belongs to these people away from them. So, you know, let's not just be like coy and, and rash about the decision-making process here, okay? Because there has to be some better solution than simply say, I'm gonna take this spring that's potentially been here for thousands of years and sell it to the highest bidder. And what really, really upsets me is to hear you guys say, well, set a minimum price. So not only does it not mean anything to you, but you'd also be willing to sell it to the lowest bidder. If that's not adding insult to injury, I don't know what is.
Let me get a, if you're what we talking about, you think we selling the spring, we're not selling the park where the hotel was in the spring.
Okay, I understand.
We're selling scrub, just for the land, and the business, and the spring that is there. All he wanting to do is expand his business, put more stuff on the tax road, and he wanting to make something nice and clean up the area, it's nothing but a big scrub that people have been digging for airheads in all the time, that's all I've seen there, and I walked through the whole thing, how many other people walked through it?
Okay, well, can we, can we look at the, we're getting the map on the, let's take a look, I, I'm just, I'm just gathering.
There's the map right there.
Well, yeah, but this one so that everyone can see the map. I don't just need to look at it, but we need to look at this together, that's the whole purpose of these people showing up here, I'm sure a lot of other folks here have the same.
They wouldn't dare sell the spring.
I understand that.
Or the hotel, so I would.
I'd like to ask.
Everybody's called me talking about that, and that's not what we're doing. We're not selling the river front there, the creek front, we're not selling, we're selling where Daddy pointed out to me when I was a little boy, that was where the railroad used to come in up here with this piece of property, is it was a railway, railway in there, it made a loop, and that's where that was.
Okay, well, so then, can I ask, who, who in particular has already, or had there been any entity make a bid for this property that you guys are proposing to sell?
Do what now?
Have there been anyone who's, is there someone first in line to buy it?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
No, it'll be up for bid, anybody can buy it.
Everybody's bid, but there has been individual that is very interested in the land, the whole reason this is like, the whole reason this came up.
Anyone in the county.
Does that individual happen to already own the land adjacent to the property?
You did, you got it.
So then what are, what are we doing here, folks? Is this just basically an inside real estate deal?
Thank you.
That the county commissioner is gonna just go ahead and roll over the people?
Uh, but you can go bid on it.
Uh, you know, actually.
It should be up for bid at all.
Thank you.
It should not be up for bid at all.
I've written to.
Why is it saying in this, in this?
I've written.
Respect to saying that it's just an inside deal?
Uh-huh.
Not an inside deal.
Okay.
Anybody in the county could bid on this property.
But you guys don't have an established price for it yet.
I don't have a downer price for it.
It would be.
Well, because, because what I've, I, I intend to do is, is to begin a campaign to pool money, I will actually ask the people in Taylor County to pool their money, I will open a fund named for the people of Taylor County, and maybe we'll need that amount of money, and when the people buy that little piece of property there, it won't belong to you guys alone anymore. I've written to NFL players who grew up in this community about this situation. I'm pleading with one right now, because the man has the money in his front pocket to buy it and give it to the people, but what I'm asking him to do is not only buy this little parcel, I'm asking him to buy the entire facility with the understanding that he entrusted to the people.
Absolutely, I appreciate it.
Well, I understand that, but if you guys are willing to sell a little piece of it, then how long until the rest of it is?
Thank you.
I mean, listen, I know that this kinda touches on another agenda item, but why is it that individual property owners are being the one to bear the burden of the economic decline here? Let me ask you, and I don't expect you to have the numbers on the top of your head, but how much money does Walmart give to Taylor, or to Taylor County? Is there just a set tax rate for them?
Maybe they pay their taxes as everyone else does as well.
We're not talking about Walmart.
Well, we're talking about this agenda.
Right, well, but this is, it all relates to the same fact, you guys are desperate for money. All of these items.
I guess if you were here earlier, you understand the issues that we have, we're talking about shortfalls and economic downturns.
Right, so what I'm against.
We have a business that's.
Is there, is, but I, you actually interrupted me, I'd like to finish.
Your time's up.
So, my time is up?
It is.
Well, I'll come back.
So here's what I got to say, too.
Well, here's what I'd like to point out first, excuse me, what I'd like to point out is that every corporate entity in this town remains just the way you guys got no problem.
No, that's the problem.
You have no problem with a new Dollar General being built here, so what are the Keaton Beach owners of Keaton Beach, well, what are they supposed to do if they do manage to reestablish their business now, they have to compete with a Dollar General?
So, let me just say this, sir, this all derived from, yes, a local business came with the interest in purchasing, really in purchasing the entire park, but we're not interested in selling the entire park with the historical side of it and all that, where everyone goes in there to the historical district, it's all still there, it's just a portion of, there's thirty-eight acres there, and there's six acres in that corner that, now, he might not get it, and he knows that he might not get it, if someone else, if it, if that's the will of the board to move forward, that someone else could end up with it outside of him.
Well, then, I'd like to just make this suggestion to the board, and I'll sit back.
But I do wanna say that this, this didn't just come up last month, or two or three months, I mean, this, this has been talked about for a year.
I'm aware of that, I do pay attention, I read the papers, you know what else I do? I use the internet, you know what else I do? I check in on things, you know what else I do? I make sure and look at people's track records and their histories, and I don't have a problem telling anybody, you know what else I do? I call the governor's office on a regular basis. And you know what else I do? I make sure that the Board of Commission of Ethics may not find a particular interest in this county, okay? Because let's just be frank and honest, Doge is not out to look for counties that have good, clean budgets that are in the black. Doge's microscope and their magnifying glass is about to be hovered over the counties that have no explanation for economic downfall.
Guess what, we have a lot of them here, so, they'll be here.
I understand that. Maybe instead of selling the piece, turn it into some RVs, RV lots, use that money that this county so desperately needs.
That's what we got enough to buy it for.
Turn it into.
Right, but that's gonna be private money, that's money that it seems to be what he wants with, whereas if the county would actually build something there that they could utilize for residual income, then you would have money coming back.
Hi, Tony Evans, Paul Hoffelrose, what I believe is, you said, no historical park will be sold, is the portion of that, now we're looking to sell, isn't that where the railroad historically brought people in, Teddy Roosevelt, brought Al Capone into our county to go and sit in the waters? So why are we selling a historical part of it? If the, y'all said no historical park will be sold, that is part of the history, the railroad, so it should be a shut case.
The deal is, everybody's worried about the spring being sold, they didn't say a thing about the railroad.
I'm worried about any of it, any of the history part being sold, not only the spring, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We're trying, we're trying to do something right here in this county that we're behind eight ball right now with all the tissue that we have, and we, we do need to get more revenue coming in, and this is one way to get more revenue coming in.
How much revenue, and you're really at the benefit to do it long-term. I mean, yet right now, we're all in a crunch, we're all looking for money, everybody, you have unemployed people in your community, but is that really a reason to start selling off our history, to start selling off our land, because it's a slippery slope? You start selling it off, oh, we're in a crunch again, we're three point three million short again, next year, I will just sell another six acres, and before long it's gone, then what are you gonna do? Think about long and hard, that's all I'm asking, and I do agree with Rhonda, we own it as citizens of Taylor County, it should go for a vote for the citizens instead of just, and trust me, five. Thank you.
Do you announce myself again? Jesse Messing, and Alton going for a resident. As I said earlier, I'm speaking up here, but I really wanted for government getting out of the real estate business. Maybe I have a question for Mr. Conrad here, isn't there a possible way to establish, for citizens to establish a foundation for such projects as Hampton Springs? Sure, yes, there is, if they're willing to take care of it. So what I would recommend, you know, the, the good citizens here, I understand that they have, I've only been here thirty years, I'm an outsider, but when I moved here, I mean, there was things here that aren't here anymore, and I miss them, Keaton Beach Marina, I used to work there, lifted boats. Times change, things change, if you wanna preserve something on a historical level, you need to do it in such a way that a foundation or something is established to, to address that issue. I do not believe the government should be involved in that business. And, you know, you can set up standards for the foundation to make sure and maintain it, and even improve it, because here's what I know, things don't stay the same, never. If you just do nothing out there, it's gonna be great, it's gonna go down. Yes, that was a beautiful, beautiful landmark for this area at one time, I'm sorry I missed it.
Yeah, I mean, I'd even mention, let's put a museum out there that even gives, that talks of some of the history of the Hampton Springs over the years, you know, even moving forward, and we still got, we would have thirty-two acres still there for the museum.
The part of the history part.
There's options that we should investigate on this thing, I think that would be terrific. Now, this piece of land, I don't know, I, I understand there's, there's a drive to bring in good business, I will say this, if you have existing businesses, as a business owner in Taylor County for decades, I can tell you that I would feel better if this commission were to focus on that first, before you start looking at how you can give away or sell land to outside corporations that will come in and establish this or that. I understand that that's, that's, that can be a big deal. It's also a big deal with yourself, we've seen that happen in this county a number of times, and of course, the bill was a case in point, you know, we put all our A's in one basket, now we're, now we're hurting. So I just, I guess I wanna leave this commission with the thought that maybe there's other options, like foundation stuff, generate something where the citizens come together if they're interested in forming a foundation, I know already there's a five thousand dollar fee to establish one, but at that point, you know, you take donations and stuff for it, nonprofit, and that's where you funnel the money into those projects. Once again, I'd just like to see this government get out of the real estate business, you know, you get what you, you get what you need, you already have railways and buildings and, and all kind of things in this county that you have to have as a government entity, but other things I think that are not as needed, should be either, you know, done with in a foundation to preserve, or should be put into a situation where you can sell it to a, first, a local business person, so they can advance it, and I know there's probably some people here, after I've heard them talk, you know, they have a lot of emotions attached to this, this piece of land, I understand that, but it's, it's, it's either, it's just sitting there going to waste, or else you gotta do something with it, that's, that's the options.
The chair, I'm interested in what this lady said about the railroad, I'd like to, I guess our grant's person might be the best person to check in on that, and just see if, if that's true, because that could very well be historical awesome, and that's important to this county, so I'd like for the board to hold off until weekend.
I think Mr. Moody's wanting to talk about the railroad portion.
I can answer that question. I went out there and found the railroad track built up when Melody was riding the grounds, I beat through them bushes. May I come out and speak?
Sure. The railroad used to run down Side of Ninety-Eight right there, and then went across the crux of on the creek right there, but this piece of property is not, it just run through it.
No affiliation to the.
No, it just had a spur, Daddy showed me where the golf course was, and he showed me where the spur was, where they used to bring the cars in there, and unloading people, you know, up there.
It's not the same location.
No, this piece of property, the piece of property is right there in front of the old, the old hotel, was where the, actually, I'm loading them, but the track come in through there, and unloading them, that made a loop, and we're not.
Come in, if we were walking up to the hotel, the sidewalk to the right, you walk down, it had a depot station, the railroad track come in, went across Rock Creek, did a circle, and come back out.
I know, I grew up.
All right, one concern I have is even, I don't know environmentalists, I, I don't know who it was, when I was out there with Melody, they could never find the source of the spring. It's being pumped, hot from somewhere, it's not coming out of where it's coming out of. So if you sell that piece of property and that spring actually, on that piece of property, you can kiss that spring goodbye, because if he just into it, does his own thing, it cuts off the spring, number two. He's needing six, eight acres. Well, on the east side of Hampton Springs Road, I helped Melody plot out for incline, equestrian trails, there is acres and acres of land that is grown up, horses don't go in there, nothing goes in there. Why not sell that? I can see the, the, Rachel, I understand it being adjacent to his place, but that's not the point, the point of it is, is ours, and, and none of the parks ours, but this is historical, selling some of that other, get it all, same parts I'm concerned, leave all of Hampton Springs Hotel intact.
Mr. Chairperson, isn't that where the old golf course was?
I don't know, I've never found out where the golf course was.
That's where the, that's where the golf cars, course was.
That's where the, that's where the golf cars, course was, was across the road. So I don't know that we wouldn't run into the same issue.
Okay.
Depending on exactly where that was laid out. There was a nine-hole golf course, I think, across the road.
I tried pulling up to find out where everything was. I know across the creek, you had an amphitheater and a stable. But we weren't able to purchase that land. But I do know where the railroad track come in, but I found it. Now I have a question. Are we gonna be able to vote?
If the board does tonight, I mean, it's just gonna be, we'll see.
And y'all gonna sign tonight before you vote or y'all sell?
Yeah, I think. We have to settle if we're gonna move forward with it tonight, one way or the other.
All right. Thank you.
Hello, this is my name, Odell Mussolight. Only been here a couple of years, don't have the history. Let me just ask you a question. We know there's a whole lot of RVs in Taylor County. We know this is the old story. And I just did a quick Google search of county-owned RV parks. Why not set up a foundation sometime, go for grants with the historical, what's there, and start building something that the county owns, that the county then can sell the, the spots and get a county revenue coming in direct with the historical. And this is just an idea, I'm just popping an idea. And there might be volunteers around that would actually help orientate that, and then you get the grant from the state to actually help orchestrate the funding of the creation. You start phasing it in with just a few, and then you start paying attention, you dig, dig into details of, well, the railroad track was here, and you put there certain trails here, and this was over here, so you put certain things over there. And you work the architecture of an RV park and make it as big as you want to make it, as slowly building up over time. I know there's a lot of people that come through here on their way south and north and like here to stay during the winter. I work on a lot of them, so I know. So rather than just saying, one shot, make it a county park, include the people that want to be part of it, and start intang- incorporating it in and building a, a long-term revenue from the same rentals that go straight to the county, county-owned park.
There's a lot of money in RV parks, a lot.
Yes, ma'am.
And I, I love to say about that, but I think that a lot of people would come here, if it was advertised correctly, I think a lot of people would come here and they would stay at a county-owned park because it could be kept really nice. We'd have to commit to that.
Right.
And then if we had historical markers all over, I, I think that it could be very, very successful. And I think in the long run, that we would see more revenue out of something like that than we would, or what's, might happen. Now, I already know too, that there's someone that is very interested in spearheading, I should say, a kayak business or whatever, that starts at Rosehead Park down here and ends at Hampton Springs. And the idea is that, well, this is just, this person is really thinking outside the box, but, and I, I think also that a lot of people would come and kayak through that, and again, if you have historical markers. And this person has done a lot of research. They have actually got grants that, that, that they've started on to get some funding for that. This person may be interested in also trying to spearhead just what we're talking about in our RV park down there. And you can all still enjoy the whole, all the acres at Hampton Springs and still keep all of our heritage and not put it in the profit sector. Let's keep it public.
Then you can also, e-bikes are a big thing. Build some trails for e-bike and run. And when you're close to towns, you can start, and then if we get more people, then it's gonna draw more of the small shops and the small food things. And Steen Hatchy has its own flavor. Get a flavor for what Perry is gonna do.
Yeah, well, I think we should think outside of the box. And I think, and I hope that y'all are listening, and I hope that the four commissioners will at least think about what's been said tonight and the possibilities of what could be done with that property instead of just saying, no, we've got to sell it, we need to sell it soon as we can. There's so much potential there.
My name's Charlie Peters. I'm a citizen of Perry, Taylor County proper, for the last 13 years. I came in one time, about that far back, and you noticed, and you noticed, and wanted to know why I was here. And I waited till last to speak because I wanted to hear what was going on, and I wanted to hear what everybody else said. I don't know every little detail about every situation involved in this piece of property and, and how we got to this point. But I, I have noticed a few things, and I've seen a lot of things disappear from the landscape of Taylor County and Perry, Florida. I've seen a lot of things slip through our fingers. I, I listen to people talk, and people are, are kind of curious as to why we have shopping prices, nobody in them. And, and I, I wouldn't want to point fingers at anybody or, or say that it's any person or institution's fault, but we've lost two major employers in this town. And I, I, I get what's going on. I get what, you, you need to, to develop some revenue here. And it, it, things that have puzzled me was that you brought up Rosehead Park and a kayak, I would call a tour. I, I seen that place built. I seen the water, the splash pad across the street front of it built, and the pavilion built, and I see very little use coming out of it. It, it should be generating income and revenue for this town, this, this county. I, I see that people are suggesting the town, the, the citizens vote on this matter. And I, I do believe that the word auction ought to be something used very loosely in auctioning off a piece of property, because you also put bids out in the same fashion for work to be done and, and proposals. And I, I see a lot of people get upset that when Rosehead Park and the pavilion were built, they were built by people that didn't live here. And they wanted the opportunity to work on those things, the same people who have lost work because the two major employers left this town. And people who had to leave this town because they had to support their families, and they had to provide an income. They knew what they had to do to do something about it. And I think that it's kind of clear here what needs to be done to do something about it. There are other options besides thinking about Hampton Springs Hotel and their property. If you include Rosehead Park, that's an option. There are other options. It's just my two cents, and I wouldn't say that that was a highly educated two cents, but it's food for thought and a seed for something else. I appreciate the time to speak.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Can we hold off on this decision tonight and, and at least consider some of the other options before we just, just jump off headfirst and do something that may be regretted later? Clearly, there's more options.
I'm not picking down that road anymore. I made a motion to put this up for sale. That's where I'm at.
Any other discussion? Now, this is, tonight is just approving the actual.
Boundaries.
Boundaries that's played out here.
Yes, because I can't move forward with any, any of the previous instructions from the board without knowing what you wish to have surveyed and the title search and the appraisal on. So that's about six acres, that, that corner piece.
Another discussion we've got.
I do have more discussion. So I, I have to ask the question. You've heard, you've heard everybody get up, and, and they don't want you to, to sell this property. And I've heard from lots and lots of, lots of people that do not want to sell it. I've heard from a few that do want to sell it, but by and large, the majority of people that I've heard from do not want to sell it. So are we supposed to listen to the people about the people that is there? Again, this is not, this is not our property. It's not yours, Commissioner Moody, or anyone of y'all. It's not mine. This property belongs to the people of Taylor County. And the people of Taylor County should have a say-so in it. Who are we to sell the people's property? We don't have the right to do that. Okay, we do have the right in terms of, our, our, our attorney, I'm sure, would say, yes, you do have the right. But really, morally and any other way, I don't think we should be doing this when there's other options. And our people do not want us to sell this property. Listen to the people, not just one person that wants to buy it. Listen to the people.
I've had a lot of people tell me, and call me and approve of it, and saying, and told me, said, there's a lot more tracks around Taylor County that the county owns, needs to be sold too. Because they're all looking for this property across the street where the golf course was. I can make a beautiful business one day. Somebody will build something right there, you know. I mean, we got to get things on the tightrope. We got to have revenue coming in, and people get jobs. I mean, it'll be job generated, but that kind of thing.
And I'll tell you, I'm, I sit on the Development Authority, Ex officio, I don't vote, but I am there. And they are working diligently seven days a week to find industry to come in to create and have jobs. So that's being done. We've got somebody that wants to make a kayak trail out of it. They're willing to help write the grant. So we're, we're doing a lot of things to move forward instead of selling historical property. What we've got to do, we've got to get the budgets under control. That's the first thing that we've got to do. The budget's under control.
This is one step to get to going to D.C. Road.
How much will it bring in, Commissioner?
Huh?
How much revenue will this bring in?
I don't know what it'll come out for bid. We haven't got, except for a bid, if we get a I B on it, it'd be put out of court about it.
We don't know how much it's gonna bring in, but my guess would be it would not be very much. Our big business, obviously, is a big lucrative business. Why couldn't we do that? We could get grant money to improve that property. We could be in the RV business and make.
Do you want to, do you want to income short-term, or do you want income long-term?
Well, there's plenty of property across the road, high dry ground.
That's why I'm asking, why does it have the historical part?
Yes, well, it is, that's where the golf course was, where the whole historical part was. You got, I mean, we got, what I did, I put a motion to move forward with getting the survey and the estimate. Everything's done.
But that's discussion, though. You're right. There are other properties that somebody could find. If they, whatever they want to do with the property, they've got other options available to them, not just our property.
You said that you're ready to not kick the can. What does it take to put it on a ballot for us to own this property, not the people that represent us, okay, to vote on it? What does that entail?
If this were voting to do that, and it would go on the ballot next year in 2026.
You had so many people call you to do that. Why don't we put it to a vote for the Taylor County citizens?
We, if we did, if we waited on vote on everything we did up here, the people of Taylor County elected us to take care of business for us. That's what we got left.
And I agree with that, but you also have to hear the whole county, not just a few.
We need to hear the whole county. Everybody in this board right here is represented by a county.
The majority in your district, what have you heard, honestly?
Really, I've got as much calls in all districts, that, and majority of the calls have been letting this force you go.
You?
And you don't worry about me.
You?
But I tell you, wait.
I mean, I'm just asking, I don't know, but I do know what's been on Facebook.
Yeah, Facebook, Donald, that's the whole story. I've asked somebody's opinion, and everybody got one. What I've been hearing, sell it. They said things happened in Taylor County, moral part in Taylor County. Mr. Bishop's office down there, it was a county jail. Don't, wait a minute, wait a minute, if you want to listen, if you want to listen. That funeral was hung down there. People, you know, that was actually hung down there in Mr. Bishop's office. And it's sold. You know, the people that, that died, that left their loved ones hung down there. Said, by the way, we shouldn't sell it, but they did sell it, and I'm glad they just sold it then. Now, whatever happened in Hampton Springs, I don't know. I went to Hampton Springs, I was probably seventy years old before I ever went down there, either nowhere, what? And I went and quit my, and since I got on the calculator, then I might hear everything I get about it down there. Somebody telling, going down there with automobiles, telling the, uh, this facility's up. All the facilities we got, the funding facilities, tables down there, if you don't keep somebody down there, it gets to them.
Then, then are you gonna sell them off?
Well, you're good.
You're gonna sell Rosehead Park, you're gonna sell the splash pad, the pavilion, so you don't have to still worry about?
Good for that.
I used to ride my horse down there when I was probably, I was raised down on the Courtney grave. I grew, probably eight years old, I started riding by myself to the Hampton Springs and Waldo, if any of y'all remember where that was. But that's part of our history. We used to go down there.
All of it is history.
And if you're gonna do it, then put it up for a vote for the Taylor County, for the citizens to vote on it. That's all we ask. And if, if we get outvoted, the ones that are for it get outvoted, I'll shut up. But if you put it up for the vote and let the citizens at least, as a whole, do it, then we can go from there.
I didn't get a chance.
That's all I'm asking.
I didn't get a chance to finish.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
But then, and, and now, I heard about the two wheels leaving, I heard about the three storms. We have no control of any of that.
Correct.
Right?
Oh, I agree.
And then.
I lost a house and a shop in it.
Sure, okay. And then the governor comes in and say, let's put a road on the east side of Taylor County and carry it through a four-lane road and all this. We voted that down, but we wanted to keep Taylor County like Taylor County's supposed to be. I heard, let's go to the county line and just chop it off and fill out business. I've heard all of that. I've heard some all kinds of stuff. I've been in this world long enough to know and hear what people say, that it really bothers me. And I'm not selfish. When I, when I read the history and I know what was happening down there in that county jail, I, not only that, there are places, right there on 19, there was a school that was burnt by several people. Who it was, I don't know. But now, that was history for us. But there's a certain segment of the community that thinks what they say ought to go. But when you look at the entire community, when you look at the entire community, what's best for the entire community? I believe in progress.
Oh, I do too.
I believe, let's go.
Think outside of the box.
You know, if they wanted to sell. Now, let me tell you something else. I did know about this. Now, Mr. Madley did give me $500 on the campaign, but I filed it with my, down at, uh, thing, down at the Hampton Springs.
Oh, did I, I don't know.
But I did not vote, and I have not committed to Mr. Madley for nothing. We put that thing up for, uh, auction. Oh, oh, oh. We have put that thing up for, oh, oh, oh.
You have committed to it for a long time.
Never did. I'm not committed to five, five hundred dollars of these. It's nothing for me. I'm not rich, but I wouldn't sell much over five hundred dollars. But now, for Taylor County, I don't know what it would bring. Not only would I sell that, I'd sell the most of it I'm into. Sell it all.
Spray you on. Yes, sir. I expressed my opinion to you then and Brother Jim over there and everybody else. I'm not selling any of the property. It won't ever pass through your hands again. Not the money you get out, it won't be much, but it's money you point and set it. The, putting it on a referendum, people hurt nothing. Then all that, they won't let it go up in value. You can get more for it than you want to give. Why, why even, why not let the people decide? That's what we did when you put a sales tax on it. People originally voted for it. But the sad thing about it was, was they didn't go with the referendum. The referendum saved the sunset with hospitals, or who the jail was paid for, they didn't get the sunset. That was one of those things that where truth wasn't told. But the fact is, if you put it on a referendum, here and now, it's not going to be able to go up in value. You can get more for it.
Just a quick question, but to get away from the idea of the property, looking for income and bringing some in. There was talk of a company coming to this town, I believe it was Harbor Freight. What happened with that? We were understood, people I know anyway, were understood that there was work started on that, all of a sudden it stopped. Nobody knows why and there's rumors that they might have come back, but they're not the first. When I first came to this town, it was Biffo Brady's wanted to come to this town and they didn't.
I can answer that. When that paper mill and that sawmill shut down, things like that. Full opinion.
I want to say something to that. This was, this was, what you're talking about, Biffo Brady's and Dunkin' Donuts and some of these others, that was long before the mills shut down, okay? This was several, several years ago.
That's right.
And I, I know that it was discussed at the Development Authority Board and they had shown some interest. And why they backed out, I do not know. I can tell you this, that this board has something in place that if, if a business wants to come here and if they meet certain criteria, then we offer incentives for them in terms of tax incentives. So we do everything that we can on our part, but things like Biffo Brady's and these other things that you mentioned, that's private business. This county does not engage in opening up a Biffo Brady's or a Harbor Freight. We don't do that. But we offer incentives to anybody that wants to come in. The reason I'm saying that, because I've heard a lot lately about, oh, people try to come here and we run them off. That is not true. We try to offer what we can in terms of incentives to get people. We will work with them if it even means helping them with permitting and other things. So we do our part. We don't run them off, okay? If that helps you.
It might help a little bit and it might lead to something for a later date to think about, but just the same, as far as Biffo Brady's is concerned, restaurants and things I've seen in thirteen years open up and shut down within months. And those are people that lived here, that wanted to start businesses on their own and they either hit brick walls or they just weren't favored enough. But just recently, Casa Grande moved up in scale. They got a place at another location and fixed it up and, and they do really well. And, and it's kind of odd that they're doing well and other eateries don't do so well. We, we just had Burger King leave and I thought that the funniest thing I'd ever seen, McDonald's and Burger Kings next to each other and competing for your dollars. And finally Burger King gave up. Does that mean McDonald's is doing any better?
Well, we don't, we didn't have anything to do. That was, I guess, a corporate decision.
Those are all private, yes, I understand.
But we don't run them off, okay? Now, what happens is we've got someone in town, people in town that do own restaurants and all that, from what I understand from other people too, that when anybody decides that they want to bring something to Perry, they hire these people, I don't know what they're called, but they do surveys and, you know, they look at the traffic count, they look at the income, they look at all kinds of things. And then they get back with this, this person that's thinking about bringing that in and they say, okay, we really think that, say Zaxby's or whatever, we really think that Zaxby's would do well there because you've got the traffic, you've got the kind of people that would, would utilize that. Or they'll say, you don't, you do not, you do not, Taylor County does not have what it takes to support this business. And I know people that have tried, thought about bringing things in, but when they got that report back, they knew that they would not be successful.
I understand that process as well, market and research and demographics, splitting hairs, just to find out if they're going to lose one penny. I get that. Back to the original question, and forgive me, I might be shy of some details everybody else might know and I don't, but what did happen to Harbor Freight? That's good business to have here. And it's not food related. It's an industry that would employ people and provide a service that the majority of citizens of this county could use and that's place to buy tools at a nice price. And we got Tractor Supply, which is not a bad business, but let's admit it, some of us can't afford that place. So we go look at what they got and then we wind up back at Walmart. Walmart seems to be the place to go. And they've taken some changes. When I first came to this town, they were open twenty-four hours. Then they started closing earlier. Now they're closing even earlier. Now the remodeling and that's great, but how did they manage to do that? How, how did they manage to decide that they deserved to remodel the Walmart when everybody else is still looking for other alternatives? They must be doing pretty well over there. It could be because they're monopolized that market and, and we should open up. When I refer to the plazas that are sitting here, Papa John's was here for a while and I hate to go back to a food or a restaurant, but it's operated by another restaurant. And yet in that plaza is a great big store that could be employing people and providing more tax income. And that's the basis for asking about these businesses, not because I expected you plan to put a restaurant here or there or open up another business, but to draw in that revenue and, and the incentive, the tax incentive is understandable. That's, you would expect that, but at the same time, you're looking for tax revenues. So you've got to be a little conservative with that.
Well, you've got to have an investor that's willing to take that chance. And a lot of people don't have that much discretionary money that they can take a chance of losing, losing everything. But if someone wants to come here and they meet the criteria, this board is willing to help them in every way possible.
That's, that's good to know. And I will certainly develop my next line of questions on the next day. I appreciate the time.
Well, come back.
Thank you.
I'll speak again. Go ahead, Senator. Send yours first. This is a little bit of history, you know? One of your largest sales tax and property tax sources is Walmart. I'm not going to contradict what you said there, but did you know how Walmart came here? I was at a Development Authority meeting. Ms. Watch Davis up there at Bowit asked me, she said, why can't y'all get us a Walmart? I said, Ms. Davis, that's bigger chore than what I can do. And she said, she won't even try. He tastes like the rest of them. I said, no, ma'am, we won't. With the Development Authority, I asked them, let's send Walmart a resolution to have a, and it'll be in their minutes and have Walmart come here. Members of the Taylor County Development Authority run me out of there. We don't want a Walmart. The tax collector here in this county, who's the Chamber of Commerce President, he said, we don't want a Walmart. We'll do everything we can to keep a Walmart out. And to this day, the last thing he told me was, I won't go in that store. So if you don't think that it happens, it happens.
You know what I did? Walmart shut down a mini small business in Taylor County that was owned by people that were raised by everybody in Taylor County.
That's right. But you look at the sales tax, look at the sales tax revenue that you get off of now and the property tax revenue that you get off of now. I, I realize there was some, and I understand where Mark was coming from. He had Yarborough Pike. And I realize he was very concerned about it. I understand why some of the gas drivers were concerned about it because they put gas out there that's cheaper than it is everywhere. I understand all of that, but just look at the revenue right now. Where would you be if they weren't there? Let me tell you something else too. If you keep up with the news, in spite of the fact that they're building, Georgia Pacific was building on every day. But in spite of the fact that they're building, the brick and mortar stores are leaking. People are ordering online. I buy online everything I get. You know what's the sad part of things? I paid sales tax in Madison County, but I live in Taylor County because I have a green deal with chicken.
I want to say that I was not on the Development Authority during that time, Walter. I was on the city council during that time and I fought just as hard as you did because when I campaigned, every house that I went to, they said, we want a Walmart. Can you bring a Walmart? Well, no, I can't promise to do that, but I'll do what I can if it comes up. So it came up and I had to fight tooth and nail with some of the people that you referred to that did not want Walmart to come here. The competition is good.
I was, I was the chairman at the time and good, make the motion. And I asked Commissioner Russell to make the motion to do a resolution to ask him to come here.
But anyway.
It's me, Kyle Beasley again. What I just want to point out to you guys, being that we're still on this subject in particular, Dollar General and Walmart are actually under an umbrella. Did you know that? Are you aware that they're both, actually, the majority shareholders are BlackRock and Vanguard and State Street? Those are capital, merger and lombrance. Their world, Larry Fink is the guy who founded BlackRock, okay? Larry Fink's one of the richest people on earth, okay? The same people that essentially own Walmart own Dollar General's. Okay, so you guys maybe, is there some way you could have a stipend that you require when corporations come here in addition to the taxes that they pay on the property? Being that you can just approach them and say, look, because I am a public servant and I represent my constituency and the fact that your corporation is coming to our community, you're, you're putting it, our local business owners at a disadvantage. Therefore, to offset that fact and offer them more incentives and also to collect more revenue that the county and the city need, we're going to need a little more money from you, Dollar General, on several billion dollar a year company. We're going to need a little bit more money from you, Walmart. You own like pretty much every department store on earth at this point. Again, like I stated earlier, we don't need another Dollar General in this county because they pump cheap Chinese materials. Our president right now is addressing this issue. So imagine if you will, you're a miniaturized version of Donald Trump. What is the best, his best suggestion is that you create some sort of a tariff that you require from these corporations that are coming here and ripping this county off. The last thing I'd like to say is, look at this downtown area and then look at the corporate chains out on the highway. Now, I, I myself have started two businesses in this county that both failed, okay? And part of it was my mismanagement, I'll take that blame, but also what, what really disgusted me to some degree was the fact that people actually said, oh, well, we ain't shopping there, you ain't from here. And I really thought to myself, who has created that sort of culture in this county? I'm, I'm being honest.
All right. So we have a motion by Commissioner Moon to approve it this night. Do we have a second?
Motion is to move forward with title search, appraisal and survey.
Director Rock. We have a motion and a second by Commissioner Moon. All in favor?
No. Mr. Chairperson, I just want to clarify that's to move forward on this parcel.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you say?
Five point nine two.
The one that's up on the screen because that was, that was really the question. Yes, sir. Okay.
All right. We'll move to, out of eighteen, the board is considering approval of E O G, November 11th resolution of the county by the county legislature.
I did place this resolution on the agenda, but this was obviously a request by Commissioner Fevel. Because of the sensitive nature of responding to this request, I did ask the county attorney to prepare a draft resolution. We had a sample from Jefferson. Yeah. Right. That I sent to the county attorney. Since the response is due tomorrow, I'm assuming that we want to send the resolution in tomorrow as well if the board adopts this.
So you want to read the resolution by time long?
Should we read it by time long or in its entirety, Mr. Bishop?
Let me see how long it is first.
It's only one page. I'll say in its entirety.
It's a page and a half.
Read, read it in its entirety.
That's my motion.
I've got a motion to read the resolution to its entirety. Do a second. Second. Second, by Commissioner Moon. All in favor?
Hang in, folks. Here we go. A resolution of Board of County Commissioners of Taylor County, Florida, supporting Executive Order 2544 entitled, Ensuring Government Efficiency in Collaboration with the Governmental Efficiency Term, E O G Da Duj, with identifying unnecessary local government spending, creating efficiencies and serving taxpayers' dollars and providing for an effective day. Whereas on February 24th, 2025, Governor DeSain signed Executive Order 2544, Ensuring Government Efficiency. And whereas the executive order establishes within the Office of Policy and Budget in the Executive Office of the Governor, a Department of Governmental Efficiency Team, E O G D O G Team. And whereas the E O G D O G Team is responsible for assisting local governments in identifying unnecessary spending, eliminating waste and saving taxpayers' money. And whereas to best serve the people of Florida, local government should, in partnership and assistance with, of E O G D O G, actively participate in comprehensive review conducted jointly by the E O G D O G Team and local government to identify and eliminate unnecessary and inappropriate spending. And whereas the Taylor County Board of County Commissioners hereby finds it's in the best interest of the residents of Taylor County to work in partnership with the E O G D O G Team on the county fiscal inefficiency review. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Taylor County, Florida. Section one, legal findings of fact, the foregoing recitals are hereby adopted as legislated findings of the Board of County Commissioners and are ratified and confirmed as being true and correct and are hereby made a specific part of this resolution upon adoption hereof. Section two, support. The Taylor County Board of County Commissioners Board supports efforts identifying unnecessary spending, creating efficiency and saving taxpayers' dollars. The Board supports identifying and working to eliminate unnecessary programs, misaligned grants and redundant contracts within the county, including those which may be inconsistent with regulations of the state. Section three, good partner, good faith partnership. The Board desires to work in good faith with the E O G D O G Team to facilitate their mission and to conduct a comprehensive review of the county's budget and operations. Through this partnership, the Board will grant the E O G D O G time. Through this partnership, the Board will grant the E O G. D O G. Team access to the necessary records and any physical premises to review documents and data which may assist the county in identifying inefficiencies. The Board will recommend administrative or policy reforms to promote efficiency and maximize productivity within local government. Section four, direction and appointment. The Board of County Commissioners directs the county administrator and the county staff to be available in support of E O G. D O G. Team requests and to provide any necessary access and requested information to the E O G. D O G. Team. The Board hereby directs the county administrator to serve as the point of contact for all E O G. D O G. Team-related inquiries. Section five, effective date. This resolution shall take effect upon adoption.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Feagel to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Dent, all in favor?
Aye.
I would like to point out that our clerk has answered the Dooj letter. It was, it's due, it was, the response was due tomorrow. He answered it today, answered all of the questions, and this will be sent in as soon as I get it back.
All right. We'll move on to item nineteen. The Board considers approval of Graff Dorman Road Speed Limit Resolution presented by the County Administrator.
Do you want to speak to this, Tom? I just said it under my name, but you prepared the resolution.
Yeah, I was instructed to prepare a resolution, and it's real short.
We want to just read this. There's not really a Kyle stage. Want to read the... And so we have a motion to read the resolution.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Dent. Second by Commissioner Moody. All in favor?
Where's it come? Here I go again. Whereas it come to the attention of Board of County Commissioners of Taylor County, Florida, that the speed limit on the following described road needs to be set. And whereas on the below listed road, the speed limit should be set as outlined below. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Taylor County, Florida, that one, the speed limit on Dorman Road is set at fifteen miles an hour. Two, any resolution or posting of any different speed on said above described road, which is different from the above, is hereby repealed. Passed and adopted through regular session. If you do it today, it's the seventh day of April twenty-twenty-five.
Well, we have a motion to...
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Moody with a second by Commissioner Dent. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have covered item twenty, so we'll go to county staff items. Item twenty-one, the Board considers approval of B Committee's recommendation to move forward with contract and cost negotiations with A L W Architects for professional services for Dr. Memorial Hospital Rookie Project presented by the Grant Rider and County Administrator.
Hey, everybody.
Hey, Melly. How are you?
I'm good, thank you. We had seven, we received seven S F Ps on this, or R F Ps on this project. And a lot of thought went into it. We had two candidates that were very close together. But the winner ended up being A L W. And we are recommending that the Board move forward with the contract and cost negotiation with A L W. They had a great deal of hospital experience. We also have to have approval from the Department of Commerce. And they've already did the approval on moving forward with A L W with your approval. In addition, they have verified that they are certified with the agency from Health Care Administration to do a project like this. We just need, we just need your approval to move forward. Again, we were very, very fortunate. We have some very good contractors applied for this. And it was, it was a difficult decision a lot. A lot of thought went into it. But A L W did average out to be the winner.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Feagel to approve. By Commissioner Moody. All in favor?
Good, Chairperson. I just want...
Thank you.
From the hospital's perspective, I just want to thank you all for your work on this project and supporting us. It's a one point six million dollar grant that's going to improve the infrastructure of the hospital. We're very thankful for your partnership and the want of help.
Very good. Thank you. All right, we move to item twenty-two. The Board considers approval of F D O T Construction Page Local License Program Agreement to construct a sidewalk on Pinecrest Street and authorizing resolution to the agenda by Kenneth Dudley, County Administrator.
This is a lab program project. As such, it does require a resolution from which you review the agreement to ensure it's appropriate. It requires a resolution for, to be approved by Board of County Commissioners, but the chairman acting on it again. So this is, just to give you a little reference back, is it will begin at the intersection with Clark Street, where the sidewalk meets today. And it will continue eastward down Pinecrest until it intersects at Howard Street, where it'll connect up with the existing sidewalk.
Motion to approve.
Motion to read the resolution by title only. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dent. All in favor?
Long title. Yay. Constructed phrase, Pinecrest Street Sidewalk L A P Project Signature Authorization.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Feagel. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Moody. All in favor?
So once we get this finished out, and we'll do the wet signatures unless they just are adamant about doing the, about using. But once we get this finished out, the design is finished, so we should be going out for bids pretty soon.
Make sure. Item twenty-three.
You're right. Yes. Please approve the agreement, too.
So have a motion to approve the agreement on that item. Commissioner Dent, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Moody. All in favor? Item twenty-three. The Board of State's presentation on Marion's Marsh Rin and Keaton Beach Coastal Park has per the terms of the Florida Community Trust Grant Agreement and terms of the management plan for the acquisition of Keaton Beach Coastal Park presented by Melanie Cox, Grant Rider.
Hey there. I will be very brief, but I know everyone's getting tired, bit tired. And this is a requirement of our Florida Community Trust Grant that we give three presentations annually on Keaton Beach Coastal Park. And you know, we've already did the back presentation. And I will be doing the third one prior to, to preview it to make our deadline. Marion's Marsh Rin called Keaton Beach Coastal Park Home. It is considered a state threatened species and is a protection species by the U.S. Migratory Bird Act. It is a smaller rin that is no more than five inches long. It builds its nests to be quite high. The males support the females will start building the nests. But after they have selected a female, the female must, she finishes building the nest. One of the reasons it's such an endangered species is because it is a rinnlier rin than most rins or other birds. And they tend to get in trouble because they are somewhat attracted to humans. They are fiercely protective of their babies. But there is an issue with them being virtually stalked by raccoons, rats, and meek, which we just see how that problem affects Keaton Beach Coastal Park. And that's one of the reasons they are thriving in that location. They are female for approximately five eggs a year, and they have eleven to twelve day incubation period. The babies are quite loud and can be heard up to ninety-eight feet a day. So they are a loud bird. They are known for their singing and for their chatter. Any questions?
Any questions for Melly?
Well, gosh, I knew you all didn't worry about the rins. I figured I could have a more of a question. They aren't worrying about right now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we move on to item twenty-four. The Board considers approval of Coast Qualified Ship Recipients on the invitation to bid for the demolition and reconstruction of two homes presented by Grant Rider.
We have two homes that are qualified for regular ship funds. This is not our tangential funding, this is regular ship funding for the year twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. And that's what these two projects will be funded on. They're both demolition and reconstruction. The first proposed recipient is Alyssa Finley. The second one is Lynn Smith. We just need your approval to move forward with these two projects. Again, they will be deconstructions.
Mr. Bishop's got a question.
Oh, I just want to make sure that nobody has a waving cousin on this. No, no conflicts, right? Okay.
Correct.
And to make sure, Melly.
All right, we got a motion to approve. My Commissioner Dent, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Moody. All in favor? Thank you, Melly.
Thank you all so much.
All right, we move on to county administrator item. The Board considers approval of request to declare vehicle a surplus in donation to the Taylor Coastal Water and Sewer District presented by the One of Pembroke County Attorney.
The sheriff brought to my attention that he had a surplus vehicle that was not purchased with Taylor County funds. It was a vehicle that was actually, I think, donated to the sheriff's office. He would like, he has actually transferred that to the Board. And the request is that that vehicle be declared surplus and then dominated to the Taylor Coastal Water and Sewer District so they can use it for field operations.
Any questions?
Do we have any others who support?
I don't believe so.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Feagel to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Moody. All in favor?
Commissioner Feagel is a two thousand and nine vehicle, so.
You want me to pick a use of this reason I asked this anyway, we could use it.
All right, we move on to item twenty-six. The Board considers approval of permanent fees for residential and commercial demolition permits presented by the County Administrator.
It's come up recently that there is a need to set fees for, formal fees for demolition. In the past, there have been very few demolition permits requested or granted. And just as a frame of reference, I think, for demolitions since the hurricane, staff was charging twenty-five cents per square foot as that is the remodel fee. But as we reviewed our ordinance and a resolution that was passed back in two thousand and eight, I believe, we really don't have a set fee for demolition. So the thought is that if the Board wishes to charge it twenty-five cents per square foot, that's the same that we charge for a remodel for residential. But as far as commercial or industrial sites, we may want to look at this a different way and charge maybe per building. Our building official did some research, and it looks like if you're charging, or other counties and cities are charging between a hundred and seventy dollars and six hundred dollars per building. And it just, the numbers seem to be all over the place. So our recommendation is that the Board, you know, we come up with a number that is good for Taylor County and ask our attorney to, I don't know if you need a resolution just for the demolition fees or if you can revise a resolution from two thousand and eight. But we wanted to at least bring this matter to the Board and ask you to consider setting a fee for demolition.
No, can I ask a question? You said other cities do what, a hundred, a hundred and...
The numbers are all over the place.
But what was that last hundred and...
One hundred, between a hundred and seventy and six hundred dollars per building.
For the whole building?
For each building.
Yeah.
So if there's a site that has multiple buildings, then we would charge per building.
Then you'd charge about ten dollars a square foot.
That's what we need to go by, square foot.
Yeah, about ten dollars a square foot.
So do we need to set that to five or...
I would, I would say that, you know, the attorney needs to prepare a resolution.
A legitimate recommendation other than just...
Well, so when we, when we look at other counties and cities, if they are charging by this, by the square foot, it looks they, for example, the City of Orlando, they charge sixty dollars for the first thousand feet square foot and then three hundred and fifty dollars for each thousand square feet after. Date County charges one seventy-one, seventy-four per building. We looked at Leon County, and it's a hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twelve cents for each building. Duval County is a sixty dollar permit fee and four hundred dollars per thousand square feet. So it, it seems like there's really no set fee that you can go by. When you look at the state of Florida, the numbers are really just all over the place.
We would be happy to...
Yes, you can.
We would be happy to review that in tech review. I mean, you got the building official, the floodplain manager, myself, the public works director. We'll put it into a concise format that says, that's recognizing the costs that's incurred so that we don't subsidizing these inspections. Because that's what it's supposed to be covering anyway, is the inspection aspect of it and the administrative.
And to ensure that they meet, you know, if there is a special subatement, that that is, that is something that is being accomplished. I think electrical, that there are electrical disconnects, that sewer is capped.
Yes, man. That's what I refer to with the inspections. And it is physical onsite inspections. And when you have, the way it's structured today, it is not recognizing the enormity of some of the ones that are coming in. And then it may very well understate even some of the small ones that physically takes someone to go to that site and walk that site and make sure that it, it is finished the way it's supposed to be. So I would just suggest maybe have Mr. McKeever bring a proposal to tech review. We meet in next week, I think it is, and then...
And then we can bring it back to the Board.
We'll formalize it to where you have something to actually vote on.
So do we need to, just so, it doesn't take months to work out this process. Should we ask? I don't even think we could prepare a direct resolution. Could we do that? We filled in the blanks on...
Two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine, those two resolutions have literally a list of the fees. It probably could just be added to that list and that ordinance amended or updated, however you usually do that.
Resolution.
Resolution, excuse me.
There was, there were original fees in the, in the original ordinance, Kenneth, I think. And that's what you see in Unit Code.
Resolution.
But then we can, the Board can change by resolution. We, I mean, we can bring back a formal recommendation. Like I said, we just really wanted to start the conversation and make the Board aware that this is, this is...
I mean, I've never seen a structure that's going to shoot from the hill. I mean, I've heard six dollars a square foot on your target. Two thousand square foot build, how many's costing, what, twenty thousand dollars to tear it down? So I mean, I don't...
We haven't had that many.
We have not. There's only been... We didn't have that many.
We haven't had that many. I mean, this, that's surely a building that may need to be torn down. It's really, well, quite a lot of permanent fee open up.
Can I ask you a recommendation? They can, they can check it out and get it to me real quick. I can do a resolution pretty quickly. You know, I mean, it's not like it takes a lot of time to do it. I think usually I charge like point one on a resolution or point two.
So really, you just need direction from the Board to prepare a resolution after hearing from the tech review committee, and we'll bring that back to the Board. If that's what you wish.
Do you have a motion for that?
No, sure.
Take the motion. And then I say goodbye, Commissioner Dent. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we move on to item twenty-seven. The Board discussed approval of starting salary for mechanics presented by the County Administrator.
This is an informational item that I was asked to bring back to the Board because we have two different levels of mechanics. The starting pay for mechanic one is presently fourteen dollars per hour, and the starting pay for mechanic two is fifteen dollars and twenty-two cents per hour. I believe at the time this was discussed, Commissioner Feagel, we had a vacancy of a mechanic in environmental services. We actually were able to fill that vacancy this, just last week, and the gentleman has started. But I did want to bring those, that information back.
That's a part of the... We'll move on to county administrator to the... That's a part of the thing that we will, we will let the county administrator to discuss informational items. Out of twenty-seven.
Yes. So I did want to bring back to the board an update about repair of our floating docks at Keaton Beach, Steen Hatchie, Dark Island, Steen Hatchie Community Center. Kenneth, was that, is that all of them, the four, the four sites?
Keaton Beach, Steen Hatchie, the community center and Dark Island, the only four.
Right. So, and I'm glad that our subject matter expert is here with us. He can talk a lot more fluently about docks than I can. But staff was able to gather all the docks, take them to public works. Initially, they were stacked up and then the contractors and our engineer felt like it would be better to pull them out and actually assembled them on the yard so that anyone who wished to bid on those repairs could visualize the, the shape of the docks, look at them from the sides and underneath to see what repairs or replacements needed to be made. So the way this was quoted was for a thirty day repair, a thirty day timeframe for Keaton Beach, Steen Hatchie boat ramp and this community center. So just one floating dock basically, so people could have those available quicker. The cost for those repairs has come in at about a hundred, well, for Keaton Beach and Steen Hatchie. For Keaton Beach and Steen Hatchie, the thirty day repairs came in at about a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. The remainder of all the docks that need to be repaired or replaced is over six hundred thousand dollars additional for those repairs and replacement, which was obviously more than we anticipated. It's more than I anticipated. And that is within ninety day turnaround to have those, those docks either repaired or replaced. Now, when you look at this total, the majority of the docks would need to be replaced and not repaired. Kenneth has initiated some conversation with the, with the contractor that had the lower of the two quotes and asked for some discussion to help staff understand, you know, why some docks were chosen to be replaced instead of repaired and what is, entails in that. We just really wanted to bring it to the board's attention that that is something we are trying to work through. And, and the, the project would actually be charged to the hurricane department and we would be seeking FEMA reimbursement for those, for all of that work. That it's not covered by our insurance and we would go through the, the, the exercise with FEMA to seek reimbursement.
Will they reimburse? I mean, what do you think? What if they do it with other communities?
I would say that any FEMA reimbursement is, is, you always have the danger of clawback. But what they do is the first thing they do, well, one of the first steps is a site inspection. So, and I think, Marsha, is that scheduled for this week or next week? Next week. They are scheduled to actually go out and physically look at the docks. I mean, I don't believe they try to set it up for failure. They, our partners with FEMA come out and we have a consultant also come out and actually look at these properties and help us work through the process of, of filing the claims properly and having everything that they, that they require and that we will need so we don't have an issue down the road.
Okay, because I heard a lot of noise about staying a good standing with FEMA. So I would expect them to fix this.
Yes, ma'am. I don't, I don't disagree.
You have the third days from, is there a start date on the, on the temporary spaces?
We just, we referenced it in the bid form as thirty days from issued notice proceed. So from the day that we say, okay, you're, you're successful, we're going to issue this contract to you, they have thirty days from that timeframe.
You have a tentative that?
We are meeting what she referenced yesterday. I did solicit on Friday, Thursday or Friday last week, trying to understand their mindset of the reasoning behind such a large shift towards replacing everything versus taking the effort to repair some of the stuff. Some of it is very obvious. It doesn't need to be repla- I mean, it doesn't need to be repaired. Others, you know, it's at least on face value, it looks like it has some still intrinsic value left to it. But if, if we were to share the bid forms with you, you will see that almost completely they're going through and with the exception of like one facility, both contractors are saying, we're going to replace these things.
Or it's consistent in the?
Full replacement. The cost between the two were about two hundred grand apart from each other. Some of them appear to have a little bit more overhead involved in it. We set up the immediate project to be able to catch the two large facilities, Keaton and Steen Hatchie. I threw the community center in there because it physically still has a floating docks hanging on that gangway and to me, it's a safety issue and it needs to be addressed as part of the first, first round. We will find out tomorrow what their reasoning is behind replacement versus repaired. Outside of that, I solicited several all known marine contractors that we've worked with, including the ones that did the repairs the first time or the construction the first times. These are the only two proposals we got back. One of them is a marine contractor that will do the installations. The other, his partner is a local vendor who is doing the fabrication. The second one, they are a one stop shop. They do the installation as well as the fabrication. So that's the two extremes we have. Thankfully, the one that is the cheaper one involves a local vendor and he did not include any markup on that vendor's price. That was a benefit to us. So if we find comfort in their responses tomorrow, my suggestion is if the funds are available or perceived as being reimbursable at some point, that we issue a notice proceed on the most cost effective options that we have. And I've gone through and kind of laid out what I think is more cost effective. You know, we discussed it amongst myself and the county administrator and public works director last week. So we have a meeting tomorrow at ten thirty, I think it is. Once we finish that, I would say we need to pull the pen and start doing something.
In, in those quotes, is there any issue in shortages of materials and such as that in the ninety day? So thirty days for a temporary solution and then ninety days for complete restoration.
And you got to remember, Commissioner, that we, we issued this as a request for quotes. So it was an informal, in my mind, the whole time, this was an emergency reaction trying to replay, repair what had happened because of the hurricane. We did not go the full route of a formal solicitation, bid documents, contracts, liquidated damages in the event of failure. None of that is part of this. So we would have to put some terms beyond just the entrance requirements that I had in there and the statement that you have to finish it within a certain timeframe to address and say, okay, if you don't finish it in this amount of timeframe, what does this board want to, you know, try to hold over their head as leverage? Or what does Conrad feel comfortable in saying, we believe that we can do this? I mean, outside of saying, okay, we're not going to pay you for the balance of the work you haven't finished, I'm not sure you have a lot of recourse.
How about you say the sooner the better? Because you don't really realize the, what you want folks to miss until you get down there and put your own enough for. Me, yeah, I've got folks with me that I, that can, I can truck in, I can get the boat and buy somebody to come. They can come back in, drop them off and then go get your truck and me hold the boat. But coming into a season where folks are going to be taking their families to these ramps and it's going to be a one man show because they don't all have the help.
Well, that's, that's probably good to start with.
And I watched, just a few weeks ago, I went and I watched just these scenarios with, you know, folks having to go in there, run their boats up against the rocks. Hold them, you know, somebody stand there and hold them. They go over and get the truck, pack it down, come back around, get in the boat. And can you just imagine that as the season progresses? And, and just these couple of folks that are coming in now, that people are going to be stacking. I mean, even the one dock, the one dock, that, that'll help. But can you see all the controversy that's going to end up causing? Is someone going to pull up there? And so there's going to be so many people coming here to watch their, their boats. They're going to, they're going to go tie their boat off and act like they've got, I mean, it's going to happen. They're going to act like they got all their own and everybody's on their time. And you're going to have all these other people over there trying to dock and they're going to, the ones that want to run up there and drop and pick somebody else and drop them off, they can't because two or three other boats is going to put in. But by the time that boat, that guy gets back to his boat. So, you know, it, I can just say, you're not going to hear the end of it until all of the dock are in the water.
Understood, and we're mindful of everything you just said. And Keaton Beach has only one loading dock. That is it. We're going to include that as part of the first round. Steen Hatchie has three. We're going to put back the center one, which allows you two points of access. Then the other two will be put as the, the extended repair. So we're, we're fully aware of the concerns that you have. All I want you to do is be mindful that we're going to get a lot of kickback from all those docks that are out there with the individuals who may think it's wiser to take the effort and go through and repair that versus we asked, we literally gave them up in form with two columns and said, price it as a repair, price it as a replace, let us make the consideration. And they literally came back and said, it is not worth our time for a bunch of that stuff out there to even fool with it outside of just replacing it. So we, they, we tried. We only have two birds in, in hand right now, so we need to pick one of them. We intend to be in a better position tomorrow after we at least can defend ourselves and say, this is why they said they are not going to take the effort to repair all these things. And then like I told her on Friday, so you give me a cost and an audit issue, a PO. That's all I need.
I'm just, even with one dock, I'm just referring, we say a ninety day period, we're, basically we're mid-April now. You're going to have May, June, July. We're at the heat of the summer and just, I understand you're working on it. But I'm just saying, it's, it's going to be a big to do.
Understood.
And, and, and there's, you know, local boat places. I talked to some of them, a couple of them today. There's folks that are calling them and asking about the dock situation and if the docks aren't there, they're not coming. They're going to the marks running around the Dixie County side. So it's just important that we get them and hopefully we can do it in the seventy to ninety days with two contractors on.
We have a thirty day issue and then there's a ninety day. Obviously, I would suggest that you don't necessarily want to issue it to a second contractor when that price may be eighty thousand dollars or more or a hundred thousand dollars more at that range.
Oh, we are, or just use the one contractor on?
No, sir. We are, there are, there are pieces of the overall puzzle that are cheaper from this contractor versus that contractor. We are intending to make use of both of them. But we're not intending to take and say, okay, well, to make this happen in sixty days, we're going to pay an extra hundred grand for this other contractor to work on this one, even though he was more expensive, you know, than, than the other one. We, we still take very serious our public sector responsibility.
That's how we do it as fast and efficiently as we can.
Yes, just two more quick items. So we have two potential rates for softball tournaments at our sports complex. One is April twelfth, the other is April twenty-sixth. The April twelfth is not confirmed. I think we're short, they're short two teams.
Well, that's the Saturday.
Yes, it is. So it's two teams short, so I don't know that that one's going to move forward. The next one would be April twenty-sixth. So we're really at the mercy of the, of the folks who participate and, you know, but we are, we are trying, obviously.
Well, how does that, how does that work if, if they're planning for this Saturday and this is Monday? And don't you have a lot of pre?
There's a lot.
Well, it's. To do? Well, yeah. So how, I, I mean, is there some kind of deadline that they have to let us know so we have time to prepare?
You know, you're going to have by tomorrow.
Yeah, well, we should know by tomorrow.
Oh, okay. I mean, hopefully they'll, they'll come.
I hope so, yeah. The only other item I had was just to remind the board that, as you know, Adams and Reese has been retained to draft an economic development strategic plan for the county. Those public meetings start on April tenth. There, let me read the dates out to you. They're all from four to six in this boardroom. April tenth, fourteenth, sixteenth, seventeenth, twenty-third and twenty-fourth. And I, I think I emailed each one of you, but I'll be happy to send you the dates again. And we have invited, obviously, the city, the, our building and planning department will be there, TCDA, the Perry, Taylor County and Steen Hatchie Chambers of Commerce, superintendent of schools and DMH representative and any local task force. So we're hoping for a, a good turnout. Four to six. All of them are from four to six. The first meeting is April tenth.
The next meeting is the sign that just goes people on opportunity for different events to come?
I'm not really sure. Honestly, I think that, I don't think the meetings will be the same. I think it will be a progression where we can take input from different entities. So I, I believe the way it's going to work and it could evolve into something else is that we would hope the, maybe the same folks can come to each meeting, but we would take input at every meeting. So they're all for public input regarding economic development issues and opportunities.
Andy, do you want to move it, please?
Here. They're all here.
All right, we go to Adam, twenty-nine. Comments and concerns of the public for the non-agenda items. Non-agenda items.
I've got one, Tommy. I've heard the board seems to be worried a lot about revenue. I understand that. But you have business and it's challenging. You gave a tax break, too. I leave this a ten year tax break. And they have imported labor they put in hotels so they can stay over in Taylor County to meet the requirements of that tax break. Why don't you revoke their tax breaks if you're worried about revenue and making pay what they're supposed to pay? And then honor and agreements and doing what they're supposed to do. They're supposed to hire people from here and bringing in labor from somewhere else. They're not doing what they're supposed to be doing. Thank you.
Anything else for non-agenda items?
I just would like to reiterate like what you guys were discussing earlier about the boat ramps. I still own property down there that no one wants to buy now due to the hurricane, so that's just, it is what it is. But I've seen several instances, and I'm sure you can check with the sheriff's department, there's been a lot of really violent fights at Keaton Beach boat ramps. So that's probably something that you really want to get put together quick because even with everything functioning there, pre-storm, there would be, what, a year ago, there was a really violent brawl because of someone simply parking their boat in front of someone's dock along the channel. So, yeah, that'd be something that's always going to get figured out really quick. And I just want to say a couple more things and I'm going to go. I didn't come here to ham rail anybody or disrespect anyone in any way and I understand sometimes words in here become sparring. But I just have a, an actual care. I do care. I, I, this community has grown on me. I didn't, I didn't move here to stay here. I honestly moved here to buy some rental properties and keep making my way further South Florida. But unfortunately, my plan and the agenda changed with my ex-better half. So now I'm kind of obligated here because I'm in a private sector of business and I'm actually responsible for bringing some tourism and some like extracurricular dollars to the county. So what's difficult for me when, when I have people considering coming here to visit and they ask me, well, what's to do here? I got a limited number of things that I can present them as far as leisure time, recreation, fun, et cetera. So my ultimate goal is to see improvement here in the county across the spectrum because it has to. I'm dedicated to it. My daughter goes to school in Steen Hatchie, okay? Fantastic school, great place, excellent, excellent principal. People there, the, the teachers there, top notch. What I find difficult is a grade A school exists in one area that is, is, is eat up with methamphetamine and, and drug trafficking. Okay, so I'd like to just make it a point here out of my own opinion. The sheriff's department, they need every penny of their budget. And as a matter of fact, their budget shouldn't even be on the agenda at any more of these meetings. The sheriff's department, the fire department, local city, I guess, I don't know if you guys handle it, the police. I'm sure that's the municipality end of it, but. guys handle it, the police, I'm sure that's the municipality end of it, but, yeah, the Sheriff's Department here, they need every penny of their money because I've been here on and off five years, okay? I moved here in 2020. I escaped a tornado in Nashville, that's where I'm from, and I paid attention since I moved here, and I haven't really seen prosperity. I haven't seen growth. I haven't seen any kind of lucrative deals offered to bigger manufacturers or people that can bring more jobs or economic value. I've just seen a continued decline even before the storms, okay? So I understand the storms have created some difficulty for everyone here, but we can't continue to blame everything on the storms. That's all I have to say. I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Anything else for non-agenda items?
I'll make this quick. I'm Sandy Hennessy from Board of Sheriffs for its management fund. I think I love my boyfriend. But we've been handling insurance for the sheriffs throughout the state of Florida for decades, and now we have opened up our internal agreement that we can actually offer to the other county officials, and we're a wonderful, we're all, we're no brokers. We do, you don't have to have a third-party administrator because we do all that. We have, our pricing's excellent, our service is excellent, and you can ask anybody that we represent in the sheriffs. We actually, I heard you're going to be taken over to jail, and we have, we do, like, when we find a coverage that we don't have in-house, we'll, they'll get together and try to find one, and Pasco County, that came up, and so we are handling their liability for their jail, so if you haven't understood that. I know that you may be, I'm more the workers comp and auto and such as that. If you, we have the bandwidth to push to cover claims that other people wouldn't. I've seen us cover things that nobody else would. Deputy that was off-duty and at the park with his daughter and the child was, a dog went after another child, and the deputy, of course, jumped in, well, we, they, the board decided we were covered because a couple of officials are going to be taking care of people all the time. That's what they did, so they covered them anyway, and so we do run to coverage instead of running away from it. If you have any interest, and one thing I do say, that quoting, even if you have a relationship with your TPA or your broker, quoting is never a bad thing because it's kind of like shopping, you can, we want what's best for you, even if we're not that. But if we quote you and our rate is lower, which happens every time I've quoted so far since I've been with them, and you show it to your current carrier, then the current carrier will often match it. So if you're really happy with the claims management, but you just want them to sharpen their pencil and get their rates down for you, a good thing to do because we're, we're not pushy at all, we're just here to help if we can. If you have any interest in that, I'll leave you, I don't know who handles that, but, you know, file folder, things you would need if you would like.
Myself or the clerk?
Okay. And then also, I asked her if it was okay if I brought snacks because I figured y'all would be hungry right now. There are sandwiches and cookies. I don't know if that's okay, but she said it was okay. So there's cookies and sandwiches and drinks, so help yourself. And, but do, let us quote, let us try to save you some money. I know that you're all having a tough time in all, all the different counties, and we have really had real success with coming in lower with our rates, and some of them have been outstanding. And so even the ones that didn't want to come with us now, if they show it to their current carrier and the current carrier comes down to matches, and then, then a lot of times they want to come back to us the next time just for claims management stuff, you know, because, you know, things like that. But I don't want to keep too much of your time because I know I'm probably tired, and, but can I give this to?
Yeah, you can do that.
Thank you. I'll just give you a handful. And, you know, help yourself.
Thank you.
Eat on the way out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for non-agenda items? We've got thirty more informational items. Commissioner Feigl?
Yes, I wonder, are the, are the trucks gone? Are we done?
Okay, not, no. They're not gone.
Can you just kind of give us the status on that?
I don't, I've, I will get some, some numbers and eat, and send them to y'all tomorrow, if that's okay? I don't believe I got, I've had an update for several days. I want to make sure I send you accurate numbers. I know they are trying to wind down as much as they can. The cement, our concrete will be last that they pick up, but they, they, they are, I don't want to say they're winding down, but they are trying to, to finish getting everything done.
How many trucks do we have in, in the county? Do you know?
I do not know as of this last week. The last time I checked, we had, I'll say about twenty-five, but I will check that. I will, I'll get a report and send it to y'all. I didn't get one this morning, but I'll, I'll get a report and send it to y'all.
I'd like to know, too, how many runs have we signed off on and how many do we have to go? Just, just for general information.
I, I know that our contractor has made a huge difference in the last check, which I think was last week, they had picked up over a thousand bags of trash. They are, so that has, that's really made a difference in cleaning everything up. Thank you.
I also like to say thank you to all the public that came out tonight, and I think that we, you know, we certainly invite the public to come and speak, whether you agree with me or not has nothing to do with it, just we need, we need citizens to be here and know what's going on instead of just, a lot of times, things are said out there that are not true. So I tell people that come to the meetings and, and you'll know, you'll know what's true. So I appreciate everybody being here and, and come back again. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, I had a call that Pine Street, you know Pine Street? They're behind you. Yeah, the equipment that picks up the trash in the road or on the side of the road, I think did damage some of that on Pine Street. Need to look at it. I got a call for that.
Okay. I'll, I'll reach out to you tomorrow for the address if that's okay.
Okay. All right.
I just wanted to ask before we follow up with the mosquito, if we're getting our rains and such.
Well, I was going to schedule that last week, but I knew they were not going to be spraying tonight with the, with the wind and the rain, so, and I did not receive an answer from her about the, what you sent me, so I, I didn't figure we would spray tonight. So I'll send out an updated schedule this week.
Mr. May?
I'm wondering if, like, they're going to have the tapas that they can pick up out at the, on Ninety-Eight for the mosquito tapas? Are they going to have those available?
I'm sure they will, but I'll, I'll just like to make sure that we have, you mean the dunks and the bits? As far as I know, but I'll.
The mosquitoes are pretty bad.
They are.
They're lost in the water. They're just getting going, you know? We got enough water to.
Yeah, I hadn't heard that we don't have them, so I'm assuming that, I mean, we keep those and stuff.
Right, right. Well, every year, you know, they get started with them, I'm sure they got them, but I mean, I just check on them if you could, make sure they got there. Yep. That's all I've got. I'm putting my seven o'clock night.
All right, coming up, Lieutenant Washington. For the sake.